Oh, I love it. I love it. Look at this. I love it.
You guys are so out of season.
We heard that discussion.
He's right in the class.
Oh, I wish you would have known about that.
You're gonna freak.
I wish you would have called me. I missed you. Oh, I could have had my big.
That is good.
I love it. You guys are awesome.
Yay. Good job, you guys.
Yeah, you guys are styling. Look at that, huh?
Yeah, some people have to work, Brian.
I'm convening the regular meeting of the city commission Wednesday.
We're busy.
I'm convening the regular city commission Wednesday, December 17th, 2014, and the last regular city commission of this particular commission. We'll go ahead and convene the meeting and take the roll call.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Mum?
Here.
Commissioner Roth?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Mayor Neely?
Here. Thank you. Would you please join me in the planks room? I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your honor for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, at every commission meeting for many years, we've used a gavel that was actually hewn or what do you do? Toolled after the, out of the Abernathy Elm tree, which had died several years ago. But it was an elm tree that George Abernathy, the provisional governor of the Oregon Territory, had actually planted. And it went down, not of, not of the disease, but of old age. But we're not using that gavel this time. We're using this one. And this one's got a history, and you're gonna have to bear with me while I talk about the history of this particular gavel. And it actually will lead me into a different discussion in a minute. And as usual, I'm gonna have to see where I put my stuff. Here we go. This mallet was fashioned after noted pieces of wood offered by curator of the Historical Society for Feast Day. And this is the day in which the Arch Bridge in Oregon City was christened. And this gavel is made out of various pieces of wood.
Doug?
It's the wrong gavel.
It's the wrong gavel.
This is, actually, this is the Abernathy, this is the Abernathy Elm gavel. Here is the one that's fashioned after pieces of wood. And they are numbered here. And each of these pieces of wood are significant. And I'm gonna read about what they consist of. One of the pieces is of Oregon grape. I never thought of Oregon grape being fashioned into anything in terms of a wood piece. It's a nevergreen shrub in general use for decorative purposes. It was adopted as a state flower of Oregon by the state of the Historical Society in Hood River, July 18th, 1892, at its annual meeting at its, at that place, and confirmed by the state legislature in 1899 through the efforts of the Federation of Women's Clubs of Oregon City, of Oregon, excuse me. The, it has a botanical name. I will not try to say it. And it's, it's referred to as a holly, the botanical name means holly-leaved barberry. It was so classified in St. Louis in 1806 by Frederick Burch, an English botanist, who happened to be in the city at that time when Lewis and Clark arrived there in September of that year from their Pacific Coast expedition. And that is, you see it? That is Oregon grape right there.
Thank you.
Number, the second piece is Guaycom, a species of Lingam Vitae, taken from a tie used in the construction of the Panama Railroad across the Isthmus in 1854. The tie was sent to the Oregon Historical Society at the request of George H. Heinz in 1910 by Colonel George W. Clothol, Superintendent and Chief Engineer of the Panama Canal. So that's number two, from a tie used in a rail across the Panama Isthmus. Royal Canadian Chariots, number three, right there. Taken from a tree that was brought across the plains in 1847 from Salem, Henry County, Iowa, by Henderson Lu Ying, or Lu Ying, assisted by his son Alfred, and planted just north of Milwaukee. This was one of the 800 trees known as the Traveling Nursery, which was a starting point for the fruit industry here in the Pacific Coast. The site of this orchard or the graft of fruit is believed to be within the limits of Clackamas County. Douglas Fir, that's number four. Taken from one of the timbers of the old bridge, this is the old suspension bridge that you see in the background there. And it was being dismantled to make way for the present excellent as well as impressive structure, the arch bridge. Number five, which is right here. Dogwood, taken from a tree which grew near the site of the first sawmill in American Territory west of the Rocky Mountains, and was constructed by the Order of Dr. John McLaughlin at a .6 miles east of the Hudson's Bay Company known as Fort Vancouver in either 1827 or 1828. We have six. It's one of these other pieces.
It's missing.
And it handles different than everything else. It's a pine, taken from a tree which grew near the spot on the coast, within the limits of the present town of Seaside, Clatsop County, where detachment of five men from Lewis and Clark exploring expeditions winter camp was at Fort Clatsop, five miles south of Astoria, distilled 15 gallons of salt from the ocean water in February, January and February of 1806. That was the location. Number nine is a black walnut, taken from the largest trees of its kind in Oregon. It still stands in Eugene. This forms the center of the gavel. That piece right there. Ten U. This was taken from a tree which grew near Shampui, a village conspicuously in Oregon annals because of its importance in the early days, on account of it being the most convenient meeting place for a public meeting. It is where the provisional government was organized, that's the provisional government of the Oregon Territory, to which allusion has already been made in number six. This kind of wood was used by the Indians for making bows before the construction of firearms. This gavel is in commemoration of the opening of the current arch bridge. And it's, the arch bridge is extremely significant. Within the time, every one of these members were on the commission, the arch bridge closed, was repaired, and was reopened in that period of time. But it is, the arch bridge is significant in its own right. It was one of the first arch bridges constructed by Condi McCollough. Condi McCollough's first bridge was over the Youngs Bay, Youngs Bay in Astoria. It's still there. If you take the business part of Highway 101, you, you go across that bridge. And it is an arch bridge, but the arches don't extend up above the passage corridor. They're all supported underneath. So the arch doesn't really stand out on that bridge. This was the second bridge that Condi McCollough built. World-known architect with our Oregon Department of Transportation or whatever name it went by at that time. All those great bridges on the coast, those great arch bridges, he was the architect. This is the second one he did. It looks like it was christened in 1823, but the completion date that I see in all the things is 1822.
Or 1922.
Huh?
1922.
1922. Jeez, I'm trying to predate McLaughlin. Yeah. Sorry about that. 1922. The first year I was, I served as mayor, the mayor of the Yakinah Bay Bridge, which is one of the, one of those great arch bridges that he did, that McCollough did, was having its 75th anniversary, and I thought I'd better check to see when ours was. Either, well, Ben Holiday, Mayor-elect, says his intention is to be here for eight years. If that's the case, you have to put on the calendar to have the great centennial celebration, eight years hence, because that's when, that's when it's gonna occur. If you want to go by the time of its finishing the construction, apparently the christening was the next year. This is a major, the arch bridge is a major bridge. It's important to our history. And of course, it's important to our recent history here. So I wanted to get everybody thinking about what we're gonna do eight years from now. Okay? For a great celebration.
Yep.
Rocky, you think of something about that?
It's up to the voters.
Rocky will be on that plan.
Very good.
I'll be on, yeah, I'd help with that.
He might be mayor. Anyway. This, as I said, this is our last meeting of this commission. And it's been a pleasure to serve in this commission. We've accomplished many things in this four-year period. The arch bridge closure and the arch bridge reopening. The ability of Lloyd Purdy to secure a grant from the Oregon Department of Transportation to redo Main Street and having back, going back to a two-way street, but also to major sidewalks improvements. The continuous activities of the, of the property owners there to improve dramatically. Some restoration work included of what's gone on the Main Street has really turned things around. Jonathan Stone, of course, is our, is our current director of the, I'm gonna say this right, of the downtown Oregon City Association, formerly known as Main Street Oregon City. And some great things have happened there during this four-year period. Of course, many of those things preceded us. The city contributed, the Main Street contributed, but what may, the major turnaround was happening about 15 years or so ago, when many younger property owners started purchasing property down in that area. And they themselves had individual visions of what those properties could look like. And I think it's one of the great things that's happened in the, in these last few years and major things happening within the four years that the members of this commission have sat here, and some of the members sitting here longer than four years. And of course, we have the library bond passing this year after years of having insufficient space at our library and actually planning going forward, thanks to so many of you that are in the audience now, in terms of what the design of that facility is going to be. And of course, we have the wonderful Willamette Falls Legacy Project. I think many of you have already read in the paper that the developer has committed to giving the easement, not selling the easement, to Metro Regional Government, and we're involved in the planning of that public facility, of the public walkway that'll go to the falls. And that's actually, that, that commitment, that easement extends beyond, beyond that and along the railroad spur, along the lagoon. So it extends, extends on that one side. Has committed up to $90,000,000 to the design and construction of that public pathway. And has also committed at least 20% funding in perpetuity for the maintenance of that public walkway. These are things that have all come into fruition within the last couple of weeks. The bankruptcy, a tragic bankruptcy that left 175 people unemployed, did open some opportunities for redevelopment at that site. And a great many things have happened in the four years. Actually, it was the first year I was mayor that the bankruptcy occurred. A great many things have occurred, and the project is moving forward perhaps a bit faster than we even thought it might. These are great, these are great projects. They have had the support of all, all the commissioners here. Some, some of us vary a little bit on what that vision was, but the commitment was there the whole time. Had support of the various boards and advisory committees that existed here. And I wanted to give my personal thanks to Commissioner Polly, who we appointed, I think, two years prior to her running for office. And this is her second year in her first elected term, which means she can run again for commissioner. Kathy Roth, who I just learned is, going to be retiring pretty soon and perhaps leaving our fair state, which is a loss to us. But she joined us four years ago and has been a tremendous asset. In times I couldn't attend the Metro Policy Advisory Committee, she's taken my place there and has devoted a great deal of time in the process. Commissioner Betty Mum, completing her fourth year here and not running again at this time, but there are future years.
Oh, yes. Absolutely.
Commissioner Smith, who is in his second year of his second full term and looking forward to both Carol Polly and Rocky Smith to continue in the direction that it looks like the next commission is taking on, which is to be building on what previous commissions before have done. Every once in a while, you get a new commission coming in. There's a major discussions of whether we're going the right way or the wrong way. That'll happen probably on some things that we deal with in the city. But these major projects I've been talking to has a commitment of the new commission coming on. But I wanted to thank the four of you for your, for your efforts. And I got a small token of my appreciation here for the four of you. It looks Christmasy, but it's, it's not, it's not for Christmas. It's for y'all.
Thank you.
And show no favors. They're all getting the same kind of thing.
I love it.
And maybe you could go out and open it if you would, because I'd like you to, I'd like to show it to the group.
I'm just ripping down here.
Oh, look at that. I love it. Very nice. Very nice.
What's Aubrey's last name?
Ingrid Aubrey.
Ingrid Aubrey. Oh, that's right. What's Aubrey's first name? Ingrid Aubrey. Sorry about that. She, she's a photographer that's put this wonderful calendar together.
Beautiful. Beautiful.
We got, we got a nice, we got a nice picture on this. We don't have it on the screen, but it, Willamette Falls and the ice.
Yeah, that's beautiful.
And there's a series of beautiful pictures here. So hang that on your wall, wherever you are, Delaware, wherever it might be.
Thank you. That's very nice. Thank you.
So we've done a great job here, but we couldn't have done a great job with the outstanding. City manager that we've all worked with here in the last four years. Our commission was divided about five or six years ago. We sat down, we were interviewing a candidate for a city manager. And David Frazier came the top of every one of us on the list. Every one of us that were there at the time came to us on the top of the list. And I think it's been six years now, hasn't it?
Four years and nine months.
Five, four years.
That's counting.
It just seems like, it just seems like six years.
The, we, we've had a lot of the executive staff have continued on from, from the previous time. Several have retired. And we've got this great executive management staff that have done so much in every one of the departments. And I would like you all, all the executive staff to please stand up. I'm always, I'm always afraid, I'm always, keep standing, I'm always afraid that I'm a butcher somebody's name, but in this case, I think I'll have them all right. John Lewis, our Public Works Director. Ben Lovler. He's, he's the guy that keeps everybody on, on, on good behavior. He deals with personnel issues. And then it's where we can call our library director. And then there's Wyatt Parno. He's our budget director. Eric Underwood, our Economic Development Manager. Not least, but best and the most is David Frazier, our city manager. William Kabeisman is an attorney. And he's, I don't, I don't think he qualifies as an executive management staff. He doesn't follow the directions exactly of anybody here. Tells us what we shouldn't be doing as to what we're supposed to, what we should be doing.
We do what's best for the citizens of Oregon City.
That's right.
Good answer.
Jim Ban, our Police Department Chief. And we have Nancy Iain, our city recorder. Katie Reeks has stepped out. Is she in the audience?
She's taking pictures.
Oh, she's taking pictures. We have Scott Archer. You know, I get these things all wrong because this is community services. Well, every one of our departments are community services. So I don't, we used to call them Parks and Recreation, the directors, which is what you really do, isn't it? Yeah, well, everybody has community services. And then we changed the name of planning to Community Development Department. But everybody, one way or another, is involved in community development, so I don't understand that. But we had a city manager who wanted to change all the names. So in any case, this is a great executive staff. We've advanced tremendously in every single one of these department areas in this four-year period. We appreciate all of your work, including yours, Jim. The, the reason, the reason I say that is I occasionally give some of the, only one of the executive staff a hug. But I'm always afraid he's gonna come out and start yelling at me, saying that's inappropriate behavior. He probably wants to say that to me, but he doesn't. Oh, yeah, I give another executive, I give two executive staff hugs occasionally. They always, they always go like this when they do it, though. But anyway, this is a great executive staff, and they will just give a hand. And I think what's so critical, and I appreciate our Mayor-elect of going around, I think, to, if not all, almost every one of our executive management people and talking to them, understanding what the plans are and so forth. He too is impressed by the quality of our staff that we have. And should, should some of the people leave in this period of time, I know we'll have the city manager looking for another great person to replace them. And I thank you for all the work you've done, David Frazier, in that period of time. We're very proud of the city. I think we all indicate our pride of this city and the great advances it has made. And to your staff as well. This is the time for citizens' comments.
Wait. Just a second, Your Honor. We, we have something we want to say about you guys, if it's okay. And we also want to give our citizens another opportunity as well. You know, David Letterman has a top 10 list that he gets to do occasionally. And so I thought it would be appropriate for David Frazier to have a top 10 list tonight of accomplishments that we, as staff, and you together have, have done. Unfortunately for me, it's now a top seven list because three of my top 10 things you've already talked about, and that was the library and a few other things. But some of the things that, that aren't on the list that you talked about, first off, was the acquisition of property and the planning for a new police facility and a new campus for city hall at the site of Mount Pleasant School, and that is on your agenda tonight, and congratulations. And in my almost 30 years of public service, I've worked with about a dozen mayors and about 70 different elected officials. And I can say without qualification and having talked to all my staff, this is the best city commission I've ever worked for.
Well, I'm gonna tell Alice ours.
I'm just, I'm just telling it like it is. I only got a year with Alice, so it's not fair. Also, you took on some really tough, difficult issues, even in the last three months, if you think about it. Sewer moratorium, how many cities get to deal with that? Well, that's a tough one. And the only way to really solve it is with a significant rate increase that you guys authorized. And we're gonna be starting those projects early next year, and we're looking forward to fixing those once and for all. I remember Commissioner Roth telling me one time, and she hadn't been in office very long, and we were having an exorbitant number of sewer backups into people's homes. And these are things that really tug at your heartstrings, because this is people where they live, touching their lives in a negative way. And Commissioner Roth said to me, you know, I don't care how much political courage it takes. I want to fix this problem. And so I'm glad that we got a chance to let you make good on that commitment at the end of your term. And it took a lot of courage for this commission to always do the right thing. I'm so proud of you. Also, the water rate rollback that was in the charter that threatened to bankrupt the city's water system. This commission not only put that on the ballot, but helped individually go around and speak to people. And working with the community and our neighborhoods led the charge to fix that problem. Our right-of-way maintenance, our management program is probably right up there in the top three in the state. I'd have to give kudos to Eugene. They probably have the best program, but we've modeled ours after that. You adopted the model right-of-way ordinance, and we're being challenged by the county about whether we should have that or not, but that's our home role authority. And you've been vigilant in defending your right to self-governance, which I think is a very, very noble thing. Also, we resolved the dark fiber project with the county, which was an ongoing conflict that lasted about a year. But we got to a satisfactory solution there that all parties, I think, appreciated. You also oversaw the construction and completion of the single largest transportation project in the city's history. That's the jug handle at $25 million. And last but not least, really, almost complete revitalization of downtown Oregon City, including a vertical housing zone, tax zone, and then just this week, an enterprise zone for other parts of the city. And that is my top seven. And then we have, and tonight, on the front page of the newspaper is the Willamette Falls Legacy Project. And the things that you have done in just these four years, these are not, you know, I've been, this is the fourth city I've worked for in three different states. The things you've accomplished in this short amount of time, really, it's only been about three and a half years, because, you know, the first six months is getting to know the job and doing the budget and having your retreats. So it's really only been about three and a half years that you have done all of these things. And this is a tiny sampling. I mean, I had a 16-page list, and this is just what's condensed from that. You also have a, a two-year budget now, saving over 80 hours of staff time every week during the budget process, which turns into tens and tens of thousands of dollars of taxpayer money that is much more efficient now than it used to be. The list just goes on and on, and it's only because each of you worked as a team. You included all of the staff as a team, and you included your citizens. And you can do almost anything if you hang together as a city to achieve these things. And I'm just so proud to have been in Oregon City, working with you and for each of you. And I know my staff is as well. So we have a few more things we want to hand out. And for that, I'm gonna come up here to the microphone. Thank you, Katie. Mayor, could you come up and join me, please?
Is it on? Is it on?
It is? It says no.
No, it's on. It's just not working.
Can you guys hear me okay?
No.
I'm not amplified.
I don't think it's on.
It is on. It's just not working.
Oh, okay.
It's in this section. It's in this section.
And for having dropped this serving.
Bring me that one, yeah. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Hopefully, eventually, you'll go without bitches. And you've seen that movie at My Cousin Vinny where he says, "I wore this ridiculous-looking thing for you." So this is my first commission meeting without a coat and tie in 16 years. But listen, Mayor Neely, you've worked as a city elected official for more than a dozen years. And we can't find all the records, but you say 16. We take your word for that. Thank you so much for those many, many years of service and late nights. Also, your wife and family making the commitment and the sacrifice to have you serve. She's pleased to have me out. Well, I won't go there, but I'm not doubting you either. You also served on the Park of Recreation Advisory Board, the Metro Enhancement Committee, the Budget Committee, the Transportation Advisory Committee. And just some of the things that I remember especially about you, you know, city managers have a special relationship with mayors because just of the nature of the work and the close working relationship that has to be there. Doug has never, or never, if I blindsided, we haven't blindsided each other, despite the fact that our city is very dynamic. It's complicated, even though it's not particularly large. And there's just been a lot that has gone under the bridge in the time we've worked together. You've been, in all that time, insisting on the fact that our citizens get heard. Sometimes ad nauseam, but they get heard, and that's because of your leadership, and we appreciate that. You've been a statesman. You've been a historian. You've been a statistician. That's helpful sometimes during the budget process. You've been devoted to our city. You believe in doing the right thing, not doing the right political thing. And I'm gonna tell a little story about that. One time Doug was being approached by some heavy hitters from Washington DC, elected leaders, whose names you would notice, about conflict the city was involved in. And I can remember the tremendous pressure that was being put on Doug politically. And he calmly sat back and said, "I'm turning..." But, um, last but not least, I just couldn't let you walk away from here without also thanking you for the amazing leadership you showed. When Officer Robert Lipke was shot and killed, you were amazing. Thank you. So on behalf of the City of Oregon City and its citizens and its staff, this plaque is in your honor, sir. We salute you. Next, we have Commissioner Betty Mum. Yeah, you're all going to get a turn in the bell tonight.
I'm great.
Betty, for our staff, and I think our citizens know this about you, Betty, Betty stands, in our view, when we try to sum up Betty in one word, it's candor, with a capital C. She, and she doesn't say things that are inappropriate, she just takes off all the layers, all the BS, and gets right to the point. We really appreciate that about you. It's sometimes just the right dart of knowledge and wisdom at just the right time, and it helps our group break through gridlock, helps our staff understand, you know, the hardest thing for a staff is trying to figure out where do your elected officials want to go, because sometimes they don't really know, because they're trying to figure out where the community wants to go. With Betty, we never had to figure, we never had to second guess where you were coming from, and that was refreshing. It's also unusual. It's a talent that you have that really helped us, I think, make a lot of progress in Oregon City. You fight for fairness, you consistently listen to citizens, you invite them to comment and encourage them to participate, even when you don't agree with them. We appreciate that. You're loyal, honest, and trustworthy, you've supported this staff like as strongly as any other commissioner, we're always grateful for that. You're highly involved in the community, and you love Oregon City, and everyone knows it.
I do.
So we want to say thank you.
Oh, thank you.
With this plaque.
Aww.
So I hadn't heard about you possibly moving away, so I'm really disappointed to hear that, but I know that you have this adventurous spirit, so I'm not totally surprised. Um, Kathy's going to be one of those people that, when she lives to the ripe old age of ninety, she's going to be that person who still thinks like a four-year-old, because she's just got this vivid imagination and this thirst for learning that is insatiable. It inspires me, it inspires our staff, we appreciate that about you so much. It's a unique thing that you bring, and what, and that knowledge and that curiosity helped us, it sometimes challenged us in ways that we weren't ready for, but in the end, it helped our commission and our community make better decisions. Yeah. Kathy Wright, did they ask for that? Um, it's, it's always been clear, I mean, you pick up your phone, day or night, anytime I call you, even when you have a very demanding job with the city of Portland, I've always noticed that, and that's been very impressive to me. Kathy has been a strong advocate for our Sister City program and our Sister City Tatsush, Tatsushina, Japan, and even went there as a delegate for us a, a year or two ago. She's also been a strong advocate to seek out economic development opportunities, and she's asked hard questions, sometimes when nobody else was asking those, and we appreciate that as well. Um, she lobbied for federal funds, and I think successfully, for the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, and we thank you for that. And she's a dog lover. And she never grew tired of, of me showing her my baby pictures. So, we really appreciate your service, Kathy, and for that, we'd like to honor you with this plaque. Thank you. And, um, we're going to open this up to comments from both our staff and to the public for a few minutes, because it is the commissions last night.
And commissioners.
And commissioners.
And commissioners.
I'll start.
You only have three minutes.
Now you're set.
I don't have a search for, or you don't have one for me.
Like David, in all my years as a police chief, you're the best commission that I've ever...
That was great, that was great.
I'll tell you, it really speaks to my point, and I got to kind of talk quick. What, uh, bit by your bug, David.
I know.
It's allergies. Um, what, uh, what we went through about a year ago, um, I, you'll never know what, you really won't. It goes for all of you. Um, uh, but I did not expect the support, you know, I never expected that we would have to go through that. Um, just give me a minute. As long as this doesn't count for my three minutes. What, what surprised me when I came down to City Hall, uh, there was, I think it was the next day, whatever day it was, I met a, a group of you down here, and hugs, and, you know, what, what we were feeling, you were feeling, um, huh. I'm going to get this out, so just be patient. Um, it is, it is very important for the people who work here, especially police officers, especially when you think about what's going on today, um, to have support from their community. It allows them to do their job, and, uh, the sense I've been, been trying to get to is that your support for me allowed me to do my job at that time. I will never, ever forget that. I'm done.
Thank you.
I'm going to, I'm going to speak just a little bit here. When I came on to the commission eighteen years ago, uh, the police, the police...
You went from sixteen days...
Well, eighteen years... When I went on the commission eighteen years ago, and it had the two years lapsed...
Oh.
When I came on the, uh, commission, uh, eighteen years ago, the police department was a department that was divided between management and the workers, and you and your predecessor turned that dramatically around.
Yes.
Uh, I think there were some issues that you were dealing with that were difficult issues, but you were, you, you had the capability to sit down with your, with your police officers and staff and say, "This is the reason we got to do this, this way," and, and you were able to get buy-in from the, from the team. Uh, before your predecessor and you came on to the, to your positions, I don't think there was a team there. I think there was attempt to build it after we had to leave one of, one of our police chiefs go, but, uh, it was you and your predecessor that made a great change in the whole system, the way it worked, that created a team out of the police department, and I think that speaks to the success of it. Uh, I, I think you also realize that some, sometimes people do bad things because of circumstances they're in, they're not necessarily evil people, and I think you've transmitted that to your police officers, I think they appreciate to look at the conditions as they exist, when they have to make arrests, or they will have to interfere in family disputes and so forth, and I think this has resulted in tremendous community appreciation for the services that you render. Nobody perceives the bad cops in Oregon City. We've got good cops in Oregon City. And I want to thank you and your predecessor for that, I think you've done a great, great job.
In my two years here at City of Oregon City as Finance Director, I've never worked with a better commission. This will be a theme for the night. Um, I'm known as probably the sensitive one and kind of a hugger, and the mayor's never hugged me, so I don't know which shoe he's talking about. Might be those guys, might be these guys, I'm not sure.
Look around.
I really do know, but I'm not going to let you off the hook that easily. Um, and, and I, I do really adore this commission, I, I think that, um, you know, I've had an opportunity to work for a couple of different agencies, and what I really appreciate about Oregon City is how down-to-earth everybody is. Um, everybody does really kind of tell it like it is, and we're honest and caring and passionate about the community, and it just makes me so proud to work for you. Um, I remember probably my first day, Mayor Neely and the former Finance Director David Wimmer and I went on a trip to go talk about working with Metro to increase the tipping fee that we can use to grant, uh, to programs that are of value to our community, and the mayor was a big advocate for that. And after that, he never forgot my last name, Parno, and he would tell everyone that he, he likes golf and par, and he can never, never get par and something like that, and so he'll always remember Parno, and that kind of stuck with me, but...
He don't like golf.
Oh, he doesn't like golf. But I think he likes me, I never got a hug that much. Yeah, hang out for after, we'll see that. And of course, Commissioner Roth, I remember watching her walking her two dogs, Kobe and Kojak, down the street and thinking, "Well, those dogs are so cute." We just had good conversations about that.
I'm having statues made put out in front.
Really?
I love it.
No, 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 you're not. Bronze dogs everywhere. And many things, you know, like the time you were pulling weeds out across from the elevator, and just the, the ways that you, you all...
It felt out it wasn't our property.
Yeah. And then Commissioner Mum, you know, near and dear to my heart, because she talks to me about things like, well, let's make sure that we're reasonable with our fees and charges, and also that we keep up with inflation, we don't wait twenty years and then surprise everybody with big rate increases, and that's, you know, a concern of mine, too. So we've, we've worked really hard on all these crazy financial things that aren't as sexy as some of the other things, but we've done them nonetheless, and I appreciate, appreciate you all very much. Also, you all volunteer your time, and that's amazing to me, what you bring to the community and, um, with your volunteer hours, so thank you.
If you, if you want to know how I play golf, you just simply have to speak to Scott Archer and Tony Conlon, and Eric Underwood. If you put a team of four people together, you want to make it three very quickly. Right? Nobody got hurt. That's true. I didn't mean anybody. Yeah, if you, yeah, sure, sure. Citizens' comments? Yeah.
Go ahead.
This is kind of unusual, I don't have any prepared notes.
Wow, yeah.
But there's something, uh, I was jotting notes to myself, citizens' comments, I put in for citizens' comments, you can pull that out. That's a really important part of every city commission meeting, that's a chance for people who are passionate about something to come up and yell at you, or compliment you, and when I first came into Oregon City, and I attended a lot of meetings in Portland, it was pretty awkward a lot of times, because people out there, as well as person, somebody speaking, looks up and you see people looking down, like they're reading something instead of listening to you. And that's one of the things I noticed about this commission, is every time someone's up here speaking, you look at them. And I mean, as, as Chair of the CIC when I was that, and when I've been a commissioner on the Planning Commission, I've tried to follow and emulate what you do, even if there's something on the screen, I try to look at somebody, because it's really important to them, what, what they're saying, and if it looks like you're looking away at something else and not paying attention, it really makes them feel uncomfortable. And so I really wanted to compliment you on that, and, um, let me see, what else was I going to say about that? It's part of the communications, and a goal for is to encourage communications between the citizenry and the, and the city council, and you guys have accomplished that so well, really appreciate it. What I think a lot of citizens don't realize when they're watching on television, on cable, uh, is that you do have screens in front of you, and what that is, they may not know, is an agenda, and it's, um, meeting notes and documents that we sometimes need to refer to when someone's speaking, but people watching on cable don't know what you're looking at.
Well, that's true.
So that's why when your citizens come up here and talk to you, and I looked around many times, I've been here under many circumstances, but you always look, and you acknowledge, that's the other part of it, you acknowledge by saying thank you. Betty, I know you do that quite vocally, and that's great, all of you, and so it really helps a citizen feel comfortable coming up to speak to you, and it may encourage other people who feel like, well, they don't care, because sometimes when people don't look at you, it's like, well, they don't care, I'm even there.
That is true.
And that happened before with previous administrations, so you, the five of you have been great that way, and I, on behalf of any citizen that comes up here, I appreciate and thank you on their behalf for showing attention to when someone comes up.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's very, very nice comments.
With that, we'll go ahead and continue with the rest of the agenda.
We're not done yet.
No, we're not done. We're not done. You, you want to go first, Rocky?
Oh. I wanted to go.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we're not...
Are we still doing this?
Go, 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 go.
Me?
Yeah. Well, I don't know, it's up to him.
Who's he? He's not the boss.
I could do what I usually do, start, start my extreme laugh. Carol, do you have anything nice to say?
I never have anything nice to say, no. Well, when, you know, I was appointed, and I felt so welcomed, and I, I didn't know exactly how everything was going to go, and I had to jump in midstream, and all of you made me feel so welcome, and were so helpful, and I felt like I had been here for longer. I just felt like part of the team, and we all started working very well together, and we had to, because we had things coming at us from all different directions, so there was, there was no time to be timid, or you just had to get in there. So it was, it was good, but I just want to really thank you, and, and thank you, Doug, for your, your guidance and just being able to pull things together, the way you listen to citizens, and the way you can take all of the facts and kind of pull them together so they make sense, and look at different angles, and then just, just pull it together. It's been very helpful and, and nice to see, and I feel that you've done a lot for our community as far as bringing together communication, um, listening to our citizens, and engaging everybody in the process, and really building a team. And I think that's so important going forward, is just, you know, building a team with the staff, the citizens, the committees, ev- everybody, we're all in this together, and, and I just think this commission's been great, and Betty, I'm going to miss you, Betty. I sat next to Betty for a while, and we've kind of moved things around, which is good, too, like sitting next to Kathy, too, but, um, it's just, it's been, um, I've known Betty for a while, but it's been neat seeing her in a different capacity, and working with her in a different capacity, and just, it's amazing, all the strengths that everybody has, and that they, they bring, and just the wide variety that we've had on this commission. And I just can't say enough about this commission, you guys are great, so I'm going to miss this configuration very much. Thank you.
Me?
Okay.
Well, I had a lot of things to say here. Um, I didn't ever plan on running for office, and I was griping about something, which I hardly ever do. And, uh, one of my children said to me, "Mom, you've always told us that if you, um, are going to gripe about something, you have to be willing to do something about it, so I think it's time for you to, to do something about it." So I did, and got a lot of, of really good encouragement from, from neighborhood and, and people that helped me tremendously. What that did is instill in me a thirst for service, and I've always been involved in a whole lot of things, a wide range of things, but this really did touch me and, um, inspired me to learn. It triggered, uh, you know, like David said, I, I love learning, and that's my, my big thing, so this really did inspire that. Some of the things I learned about, and one of the things most recently, was, uh, watching the police department, uh, interact with the homeless people here, and the night that we had all of the homeless people come speak to us, and learning the extent of, it's, it's very easy to write that off and say, "Oh, that's, that's a problem for bigger cities," or that's, you know, we don't really have to think about that here. Well, we had to think about it that night, it was right here in our face, and to... And to watch how those people appreciated the community and the police in Oregon City, it was a very humbling experience to have that evening. And we've had several of those experiences where I think we all learned together, we all took in some new knowledge. I think about, where's John? I think about John often, because I'm a fifth-generation Oregonian. We're moving to Delaware in a few years, and the town that we're moving to was built in 1642, and all I can think about is, what did the sewer pipes look like? So John, if you get a call...
Call ahead and check that out.
Yeah, that's just something I really don't want to think about. Also, something that's come up kind of rather fortuitously, is being back there, Matty Stanislas, who's the EPA person, has asked to keep in contact with me once I get back there. So I'm hoping to be an advocate on that forefront, too. I just, I really want to thank everybody here, everybody, the staff was fabulous for me, and in helping and putting up with all of my learning process. And the citizens, when we were doing conversations with the Commissioner, that was a really wonderful opportunity to get to know a lot of the community, and really, really get to know what people were thinking in all different parts of town. So I appreciate all of the people that came to those. And I just want to say thank you to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mom?
Look at, I just have a few notes of things to talk about here. No, I'm just kidding. Although I did write several things down here. We lost David Wimmer, but we gained Wyner... We don't have to go any further, huh?
It's the shirts, they're too distracting.
But seriously, I mean, we've done, we have done amazing things on this commission, not just misnaming people, which I'm against for, but, you know, I mean, when we were hiring the economic development person, I saw this little car drive up to where we were meeting, and I'm like, "Oh my God, there's no way we can afford to hire him in that car." And there he sits, and I understand.
I could be bought pretty cheap.
So that was a great thing. Look at all the police we've put on the streets since we've been here. I mean, my gosh, I'm very, very happy with all of that, and I appreciate that Oregon City Police are more wanting to change our traffic habits rather than ride our tickets. And can you talk to our neighboring cities and explain that to them?
Can't get you out of these tickets.
I keep trying. So, and then of course, you know, the death of our Officer Lipke, that was very hard for us to get through, but we all came together as a community and supported the police and all that. And then I can't forget the 400 people that came to talk, to testify us about the Rivers Project over at the senior center, that was quite, I think that was our second or third meeting, and I'm like, "Okay, we're gonna have fun now." Dealing with the slide issue at the apartments, see, I have. So there, I think we've done a tremendous job on so many levels with the staff and the commission. And I've said all along, I think this is a very good, diverse commission, because we all come with our different groups of people that help form our decision-making. And then we all work together, and we don't always agree, but, you know, we're respectful. You know, kind of like when I threw Tony under the bus with the appeal that was, what was that, withheld, upheld? Yep. First one that Tony lost, we did it, I was proud of that. It's a moment. It's a moment. Commissioner Roth and I worked on the water rate rollback, and we were able to accomplish that with a lot of our great citizens behind us working on that. I think there's still things that need to be worked on, the police facility for sure, sign me up, I'm on that committee, I want to get that moving. Working on the SDCs and kind of looking into that, looking into, the Urban Renewal Commission should be looking into Measure 3-8386, how they can help move that along, talk to the people. I mean, I think our job has been to communicate with our citizens and try and get them to understand that we don't always agree on things, but staff is not here to be the evil people that, you know, some people think they are. I don't think they're all evil, there might be one or two. Wyner. Wyner's the evil one. But look at what we've done on Main Street. This commission has helped to form Main Street. I mean, we've had the lighting of the elevator, the art stuff down there that I don't understand, but Rocky explains it to me. You know? I think we've done a lot of great stuff. I think there's still more work to do, but I'm excited, I'm very excited to see what happens next. Commissioner Roth?
Um, I have... It's contagious. I'll try to keep it as short as I can, too, but I have a lot to say. I think this is a family, I mean, this is a family. It is a very strong group, and I said earlier tonight, I think it's the strongest commission that I've worked with. It's the closest, I think, and I think part of that is because of the things that we've had to tackle and deal with, and, you know, we've mentioned a lot of them tonight, but I want to, you know, talk about a couple of them, just how it affected me, too. I think that, I could easily say some of the greatest experiences I've had in my life were in the last several years with this group of people. And I think, I had kind of thought about being part of this commission for quite a long time, and, you know, made that decision as I think some of the people here have made that decision, because they wanted to, wanted to serve, they wanted to fix a problem maybe that they saw in the community that needed to be addressed, or something, but it's so much more than that, once you're here. And I just want to talk about a couple memories I have of these people, and I've worked with, Carol's the one that I haven't worked with probably as long, but I will get to do that as we move forward. I worked with Doug, or I've known Doug since I was a kid, since I was in high school, working at the Carnegie Center, coming in, making coffee, I was horrible at making coffee.
That's the days I avoided going in.
Right, right. I would always try to avoid doing that. But I've got to know Doug really well, and I, when I said earlier this evening, I love these people, I do, I mean, these are great people. And I have just got to know Doug so well, considering my close friend. I have had disagreements with Doug before on the commission in the past, but the one thing I can say about Doug is, I know that every time he made a decision that was different than what I thought it was, he was doing it because he thought it was the best thing for the city. And I know that in my heart, I know that he doesn't think of himself, you know, in this equation at all, really. He is one of the people that is definitely here because he loves to be here, and loves to serve, and loves this community, and all the decisions that he makes are based on that, and that's it. And I don't think that's something that you can say for a lot of people that get into politics. It's a rare, it's a very rare thing, and I have huge amount of respect for that. I, some of my greatest memories with Doug, probably some of the greatest memories I'll take with me forever, is venturing down into the depths of the Oregon City Westland Bridge.
Oh, yes.
Incredible, that experience. We, when the, right before, well, right after the bridge was closed, the commission at that time was able to go and kind of see the bridge. We walked up to the top of the arch. I have a fear of heights to some degree, which it occurs to me now. There was railings that went up the arch bridge to the top, and so that helped, but I continued to look at the ground until I got up to the top. Doug was in front of me, as I remember, maybe he'd come down already, but I didn't look up until I got to the top of the arch, and incredible, but also scary. But then when we went under the bridge, we were able to kind of go down, we had a choice, there were some Westland officials with us as well, who decided not to go into the depths of the bridge, but, because I kept, we were standing at this ladder inside of the lower part of the bridge, and this ladder just went down into the arch towards the river, and I was kind of looking down there, and the contractor was kind of saying, "Well, you know, if anyone really wants to go down there," and I'm like, "Yes."
Rocky and Doug.
Yes, 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 yes. And I don't know if Doug was gonna, was gonna do it, but once I said yes, he said yes, and we went down, and it was, it was an amazing experience. I mean, you can't not do something like that.
Once in a lifetime.
And I have known Kathy for a very long time, and especially her family and their sons that I went to school with. But I remember, I just had such a great experience with you in DC for the inauguration. Huh? Oh my gosh. No! I don't remember that!
Wasn't there an issue at the...
There was an issue with security. Where were we at, the Senate Building, or the...
The Long Building.
The what?
The Long Building. Yeah, it was the Senate Building.
We all had paperwork, piles of paperwork, because we were going in to lobby some people, you know, talking about the Willamette Falls Project. What I had in my hand was exactly what Kathy had in her hand, she went right through. Security, I had a bunch of stuff in my hands, I forgot, I think, my belt, I don't know what. Went through. She did not like me. I went through, I had no, you know, hands to deal with anything, and I was ordered to take my belt off and all this stuff, and then I got flustered, and dropped all these papers and stuff, I had all this stuff in my hands, and Kathy, I don't, she stayed around kind of down the hallway, just kind of laughing. All of a sudden, now there was an issue with bringing papers through, and she's like, "We need to see what's in there." And I'm like, "Well, then open," I probably shouldn't have said some of the things, but whatever. I basically pointed out that Kathy had walked through with no problems, with the exact same paperwork, and anyway, I was there for a while. But I was released and everything, but the experience of going to the inauguration with Kathy and things like that, I'll remember that forever, so I just want to thank you too for the work on Willamette Falls Project, and Doug especially, too, and all these other projects. And Betty, I, she, I don't know, you were talking about how Carol, you know, you had to sit by her. You should see, I get bruises on my arm, like, from her sitting there. She like hits me, she teases me, she's probably the one that like harasses me the most, which is hard to say, because Doug is up there, too, but, but this is such a solid team, and I just think, you know, we think about all these other things that I want to mention, too, really quick. The, we had the closure of the End of the Oregon Trail and the reopening of it in this timeframe, we had, I want to thank you for all of your commitment to history, not just the Willamette Falls Project, but saving their Matinger House. That was a major thing, and I know that it may not have been the highest priority in some of your minds, but you knew it was the right thing to do. And, you know, this team has come through some major, major things, we have, you know, the closure of the Milliside, all these things. And we can talk about it, you know, so long, but I just want you to know, I appreciate all of those decisions. And I think when we look at this city in 10 years, a lot of the things that we're gonna see are because of this group. You know, when was the last time that a city commission bought a huge piece of property to plan the future of the city? When was the last time that this city went towards building a police station, or a library, or any of these things that we have on the list? And these are, these are things where just one of these things for a commission would be a major thing to tackle. And to just think about, the entire future of this city, I think, is based on Willamette Falls Project, and I think, we've all talked about this so much, but I think probably one of the most amazing accomplishments in the history of this city is coming. And to be a part of it with this group is extremely powerful, and I will thank you even more in the future, but I'm gonna miss you, I'm gonna miss this group. And so, thank you.
We're gonna miss you, yeah.
Are you sure?
I don't know, I was offered a seat out in the audience earlier, I considered taking it, but then I couldn't be here to think of you. Thank you, Rocky.
Rocky was mentioning he had a fear of heights, which is perhaps why I led the way walking up the arch. I'm claustrophobic. He led the way into the arch, and I'm glad I followed him, because it was a very, very neat, neat experience. Paraphobias, they kind of, you know, they kind of compliment each other.
Yes, yes, yes.
You know what, I didn't go in there, because I saw the oxygen tank waiting.
It was amazing to have that opportunity, once in a lifetime. Yeah, it was great.
Very good. Well, now I guess we can proceed into citizens comments for things that are not on the agenda. I know we have one thing on the agenda that I don't know Jonathan Stone wants to address at this point, but he should probably wait unless it's something else. So Jonathan Stone, and then Amber Hobart. Is this a Dean thing, or are you speaking about two different items?
Oh. I don't know what she's talking about.
Okay, good.
So I just thank you guys so much for being a supportive commission of our work downtown, and downtown is better for it. The, what, are you still gonna have coffee at Coffee Rush? Good. So now that's settled.
Except Fridays.
Except Fridays, okay. I will go somewhere else on Friday, so anyways, I delivered a small flyer, and it should be all on your desk, and I just wanted to call your attention to it and call the public attention to it, and everybody that is on our email list should be seeing this at some point if they haven't already. But one of the things that downtown is doing in terms of trying to improve its process, but also to cultivate the best ideas, is to do a yearly public visioning process that everybody is welcome to, not just property owners, not just business owners. And it's an opportunity, I hope 40, 50 people will show up. And it's an opportunity, I hope 40, 50 people will show up on January 14th, to just brainstorm and then prioritize collectively. And then that gives a really strong roadmap for the committees and the board to then digest and follow and figure out how to fund, figure out how to prioritize, you know, put staff or volunteer efforts to it. So I just wanted to let the public know that this was something that was happening. It's January 14th at 6:00 PM at the Oregon City Pioneer Community Center, and so that's going to be two to three hours. But what we'll walk away with is hopefully a clear vision of what we'll be doing for the next year to 18 months. But also that you guys are very welcome to come as well. So that was my announcement, and then I guess I'll come back up at the next agenda item. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Amber Holbeck, Oregon City Chamber. And just another quick thank you. And this commission in particular has been a very strong, has had a strong connection to the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce. In fact, three of our sitting commissioners are members of our chamber. And I don't know that you see that in every community, so I want to say thank you for that strong connection. And every single one of you has had a strong connection either as a shopper, or as a block captain, or as a lady who puts out signs along the roadways at 4:00 AM.
That wasn't me.
That was not Rocky, by the way.
You were not that lady.
Only Betty and I are crazy.
I think Carol and Betty are the ones that I can pick on for the signs. And Doug is our famous, or infamous, however you want to describe that, "Oh, what a beautiful morning" singer each morning as the, before the rooster crows, quite frankly.
Yes.
So, anyway, my thanks to you. But the main purpose for this citizen comment is to just briefly mention, we have some awards that the Oregon City Chamber is responsible for making available each year. And the Chamber's mission is working together to promote the economic vitality and quality of life in the Oregon City community. And probably, to most of the public, it's not necessarily always clear what the Chamber of Commerce does. Here's just a few highlights. We advocate for, we support, and we promote our businesses in a variety of ways. And we gather tools and partners and resources to encourage growth for those businesses already here. And we celebrate our businesses and our communities' successes. And that's where you all come in. We'd like to encourage all of you, everyone in this room, and all the folks that will watch this online or via cable, please be part of that. You can nominate individuals for the Mike McCarroll Memorial Award, which was designed to really honor and recognize an individual that stands head and shoulders above the rest of the community and the business community in how they have served, and just really a servant's heart to the community at large. Additionally, we'd love to have your nominations for businesses for our annual Best of Oregon City Awards. Those are like the Grammys or whichever it is, where you are choosing a business from financial services, place to hang out with friends, those places that you're just really comfortable with, that you really want to honor and see honored in Oregon City. So please go to our chamber website at www.oregancity.org, and there will be information on that front page to get you to those award nominations. And all will be revealed on Saturday, February 7th, at the Chamber's Awards Dinner Showdown at the O.C. Corral.
Woo!
Yee-haw.
Yee-haw.
Thank you. With that, we'll go on to the remainder of the agenda, and we have public hearings. We've got, first of all, before that we do that, is there anything anybody wants pulled off the consent agenda? Otherwise, adopt it? No suggestions to poll, so we'll go right on to the public hearings. We're having a second reading of ordinance number 141017, extending the downtown economic improvement district. And Eric Underwood.
Thank you, Mayor. On, the first public hearing on the EID renewal was held on November 5th, 2014. At that time, the commission directed staff to send out a second notice to property owners with their assessments for the coming year. During that time, property owners were able to submit objections or remonstrances to the EID. And by the time that this report was submitted, we had received one. The way the current proposal is structured now, there's an assessment rate of 1% of the assessed value with a cap of $1,950 per property. It had an estimated generated revenue of about $118,000 to fund different efforts managed by the downtown Oregon City group. Based on some of the questions that were raised during the second notice period, a memorandum, I've requested that our city attorney draft a memorandum describing some of the options that we would have in case it did come with, well, in case it went over the 33% of the assessed value of the objections. So they've done that, and you have that attached. Since that time, we have received 38 additional remonstrances, equating to a little over 42% of the assessed value, which prevents us from holding the second hearing. That case, we would have to go back, since that's the case, we'll have to go back and do the process over again if the city commission elects to do so. I'll just have Bill maybe explain that a little bit in more detail about some of our options that we have.
Sure, thank you, Mayor Commissioners. And Eric's correct, the way the system is set up is to, first reading is, we're going to do this, and by the way, here are your assessments. The second reading is when people have a chance to see their assessments and object. In this case, over 33% of the assessed value said, "We don't want to go forward with it." And so now you're at a, because it went over 33%, you're privated from moving forward with it. There are several options you can do. The simplest, I'm not going to qualify them as simplest, because there are different levels of things, so none of these are necessarily simple. One option would be to go back and look at the remonstrances and to see, maybe there is a lack of understanding of some kind, and to approach various people who have filed remonstrances and see if they're willing to withdraw them. If you were to withdraw them to get below the 33%, you could come back with the exact same thing and hold the second reading at some future point. The next option would be to, to take a look at the boundaries of the EID district. There may be a particular area that, for whatever reason, may feel that it's not getting what it should out of this, and, or there may be areas that are benefiting, and there might be some things you could do to either reduce the size or increase the size that might affect remonstrances. That would require starting the process over, holding the first hearing again, sending out notices of the assessments, and then having another second hearing. A third option, we'd be looking generally at the approach. Maybe there are certain areas that benefit more than others, and you could have a tiered approach, where people within certain areas have assessments somewhere, and other people have assessments there. There's a, that really is limited by your creativity about how you want to address it. There are some certain limitations on it. You'd have to, it can't be arbitrary, but to the extent you can do some things to address some of the concerns. Again, that one would require starting over with the first hearing again. So the question that you really need to grapple with is, what do you want to do now? If you think this is a good project as it is, and that there may have been some miscommunication, it may be directing city staff to go back out and try to see where the remonstrances are coming from, and if something can be done. Do you think it's a good idea, but maybe this wasn't quite the right thing, and we need to do some, you know, more significant adjustments and changes to the program? Third thing would be to say, "We've done what we really wanted it to do, and, you know, we can let it lapse." Any or all of those are something that you have the option to do, and it's really your choice now. But what we do know right now is that the second reading isn't going to go forward, and the EID won't be extended at this time. Remember that EID was originally adopted back in 2011 for four years.
What's that, Tim? 11?
For four years, and so it expires in April. So, you know, there is a little window of time where the EID will be in effect, but it, given the process that we've got to go through to get there, it's something that the city really ought to move on if it wants to extend the current one.
I think it's important to convey as well, the majority of the letters, the objection letters that I received, had language that stated that they are currently in opposition to the way the EID is structured now. So, which tells me that you might be open to discussing other ways to structure the program.
And one thing to keep in mind is, as I think, I don't know if Eric's, the city didn't receive the remonstrances until this afternoon, or today at least. And so, you know, there hasn't been a lot of time to sit down and think through and come up with the recommendation, but any thoughts you might have?
I would just mention, actually, we had this happen to us the first time around, as I recall.
Yes.
We did redraw the map.
Right.
That was the alternative we chose, and that was, that was successful. I don't think this commission can really deal with the issue. I mean, we don't get the second reading. Obviously, it's going to be the next commission that are going to be able to see the concerns that have been raised in these remonstrances and work on it. But we'd like to, we'd still like to get input from the people here that have come to talk about this particular ordinance, and perhaps in the process, make some suggestions that can be carried on into the next commission. So with the...
Can I just ask?
Yeah, sure.
So Eric, do you have a feeling for what's made the difference from when turned in to 30-something?
I don't. I think there was, there might have been a concentration of energy that kind of rallied support for objections, objecting to this.
Okay. Okay.
Makes sense.
Commissioner Smith.
Just make a few comments, but I, this is definitely something that the next commission will probably address. But the three options that are before us really are, in terms of what's before the next commission, I think we do need to find out why, you know, what the concerns are from the businesses that raise those, and try to fix as many of those as possible. I think if that isn't enough, I think then, you know, deal with the boundary and possibility of addressing that. I think the only option on the list, not even something that I want to discuss or consider, is to let it lapse. I think we need to fix it if it's not working to fit that district. But I think we have taken, there's been so many times in the last 10, 20 years, that this city makes great strides forward and then a few back in a lot of different areas, and we're not going to let that happen anymore. We can't let it happen anymore. And I think that, you know, I, so I think those, I think the issues should be able to be resolved. And I feel that because we know, because it doesn't make sense to object to it in the grand scheme of the city. It just doesn't. So there's got to be a reason for people objecting to this. You know, with the Willamette Falls project, everything that's happening downtown, it's the best thing we have going for us. And if that stops, it...
We're going to be in trouble.
It stops any momentum. And we, so we can't let it happen. We just absolutely cannot let it happen. We need to fix it, we need to deal with it, and we need to continue it. And I think that we have to look at that as a commission and almost in the future commission, I think we'll talk about this, I'll definitely talk about it at our goal session. I think this new commission has to look at that issue all across the city. We are in a place right now where we can't stop. And if we have anything that holds us back, and this could definitely be one of them, just to, you know, we've had other things in the last couple weeks, or even a couple months and years, where we, you know, held things for so long, and we've talked about it in terms of tourism. We've talked about this so much, where we've let museums close and reopen, and we're just holding out for the fact, you know, the hope that someday this becomes a tourism destination. And so any of these steps back hurt us in that momentum. So, you know, I think Commissioner Polly would probably agree with that too, and being on, very much involved with Main Street, that we are both committed, I think, to trying to resolve any of those issues and listen to the concerns that anyone has downtown. I think in a lot of ways, those concerns have been there for years, in some new and some old, but they can be resolved, and I think they have to be if this community is going to succeed.
If I...
Go ahead.
Okay.
I just, if I could go back on Betty's question really quick, I just recalled that they do state the reasons, the concerns that they have. They've listed them out as the board makeup, maximum assessment amounts, EID boundaries, City of Oregon City general fund contribution, and spending priorities. And I'd like to also mention that the Oregon Street Board did call a meeting on Monday morning to talk about this very thing, and they invited all the property owners in downtown to express their concerns about the program and to try to develop ways to move forward where it's going to work for everyone. And so we heard a lot of these concerns at that meeting.
Mayor, I have a suggestion, actually, but I really, like you, I want to hear from all the folks that came tonight to talk about this. Commissioner Smith is right that future commissions and staff are going to have to grapple with this over a period of weeks or months. One of the things that I think would be really helpful would be to have, not lose the next couple of weeks, because, you know, time is critical at this point. And so I would like to ask the commission to give us clear direction to proceed with having our city attorney and economic development manager meet with and try to assist the Main Street, or, I'm sorry, the Downtown Oregon City Association Board and their director and their staff, in trying to meet with, because if you look at this, there's still almost, assuming silence is approval, and that's maybe a big assumption, but still almost 60% of the, those there that are affected in that area like the program enough not to say they don't want it. So it's probably attainable. And I think the start on that process of meeting and conferring with those who did file objections, some of the objections I've seen are actually a little bit different than the ones Eric read, but they're basically saying it's a little higher than, I'm willing to pay something, but not that much. So there's all of these, and I think that I'd like to have the authority from the commission, the direction from the commission, that we proceed at once with trying to assist downtown Oregon City on trying to examine the issues and deal with the objections. Yeah, I think that's great. We've got a representative on that board, and I would suggest you that that representative go with you to these discussions as well. And I'm sure you're going to bring her anyway, but anyway, I think it's important that she be there. She's also a businessperson.
On the board.
Any other comments on the commission?
I'd like to hear from the citizens first.
Yeah, I will, before, okay. Jonathan Stone and David Nash, please.
Sorry to bring such a downer or a non-resolved situation on your final day as a commission. I'm Jonathan Stone. I'm the executive director of the Downtown Oregon City Association, as well as a resident of Oregon City. I submitted a letter on, you know, as director, but primarily coming from myself with respect to this issue, and so it's, you know, it's been an interesting ride, the past year, coming here, and the, there's a lot going on for downtown Oregon City, and so, and, you know, the retailers just a year ago were holding me over a barrel, saying, "Hey, why aren't we doing more about shopping in downtown Oregon City?" But fortunately now, we actually have a lot of retailers downtown where there weren't as many previously. And we've been spending a great deal of effort on, in terms of building that program in place. And so I think what the remonstrations that you receive, they're symptomatic of a program that's in transition, as well as one that hasn't maybe necessarily articulated its future value. And so I guess what I'm asking is, and it sounds like you guys are already willing to do so, is to continue to hear us out and to continue to support us as we move through this effort, because I honestly believe that if this was in front of... through this effort, because I honestly believe that if this was in front of, had we gone through this effort six, six months or a year from now, that the outcome would be very, very different, and for many different reasons. One is that I think that Downtown would better understand the value of sort of this new emphasis or pivot, so to speak, and that there would be a broader economic base downtown as well to make supporting something like this that much easier. But, so, I know there's a lot of retailers, most, most of the people that have shown up tonight, and I know they want to speak, and I just want to encourage that if they do speak, that this is a collaborative process, and that we, you know, that the outcome is going to be the best outcome, whatever that is, and that, you know, over the weeks and months moving forward, that Downtown will get what it deserves, and, and I think that the board, as well as myself, will make sure that happens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David?
Got to adjust the mic just a little bit. You know, I wanted to come up...
Why don't you introduce yourself on your position?
A little more?
Yeah, your position and your...
Your name.
Oh, thank you very much. I'm like, position the mic just a little bit more. At least I didn't get called wino, so I'm okay.
David, I'm telling you, sent a chat.
Yes, this is true. Well, wait a minute, what do you know? No, yeah. Yeah, David Nash, business owner in Downtown Oregon City, as well as the president of the board for Main Street. In fact, I still call it Main Street, Downtown Oregon City Association, completing my first year as a president. And to that, one of the things that I feel is really important about our program is communicating the value. I know Jonathan addressed that, and I come to that from a personal perspective, because as, the first time I interacted with anybody from the Main Street program was Lloyd Purdy walking in my office, and I was like, who is this short guy? And, I mean, I was just getting my business going, you know, it was in that first year of it, and I had a lot of things on my mind. And talking with somebody about what was going on in downtown was interesting, but not my first priority.
Right.
And he took the time to educate me, and to tell me what downtown was all about, what Main Street was all about. Now, I had seen the improvements, but I didn't know who was behind it, and that's not in any way at all to say that Main Street is the sole source of it. I believe it's a collaboration between business owners, property owners, citizens, as well as the city, and we have to do these things together to accomplish what as a whole we look for. Now, in a diverse community like Oregon City, and I said this recently, in fact, I think it was Monday at that special meeting, and I felt a lot older when I said it, that I've been in and around Oregon City for about forty years now, and I thought, holy crow, that's a long time to be someplace. A lot's changed. A lot of great things have changed.
Yes.
But I think every one of us agrees, there's a lot more great ahead for this community. To that, I want to say that at that meeting, and in calls, phone calls, and face-to-face interactions with both property owners and business owners, the common feeling is, we're not necessarily opposed to Main Street. We like the program, we like what it's doing, but there's some things that they'd like to see tweaked about it. There's a lot of business owners that are just, they're zealous about their support for the program. They love it. They're just absolutely excited about it. But we both know that property owners and business owners have different needs, and it's important for me, as a president of the board, to communicate to you that our current board as it sits, and is expanding, because we're adding an additional five members to our board in order to have a deeper level of community representation, it's extremely important to us that we represent our community well, that we listen to what's going on in the community, and that we address it. In fact, when we heard some of the concerns, that some of the people didn't feel represented, they thought, well, some of the things that Main Street's doing, we just don't agree with. It's not what's important to me. Well, we thought that we were tapping into some of those needs. When we heard these comments, we said, hey, we need to find a way to get as much input as possible. We can only perform to the level that we're informed. I mean, that's the same thing for you guys. If people don't bring concerns to you and share the needs, then you have to go off of what you're aware of.
Right.
So, in January, I'm actually very excited about this meeting. The fact that it has, that the remonstrations have hit forty-two percent, I see as an opportunity. There's forty-two percent of the property owners out there that we have an opportunity to communicate the value to, as well as work towards compromise, to find a place where we can meet on common ground and continue to move forward, just like they want to. I don't think there's a single property owner who wants to see the value of their property go down, or who wants to say, who's saying, well, I bought it because I wanted it to be a dump. Everybody who invests in our community wants to see it improve, and that's what we're about. We want to be a part of that process, and so I encourage you guys to do what you need to do. I don't know what your jobs are in that sense, but I just give that to you, and I thank you for the part that you play in that. And I know my back is to the folks behind me, but I thank them as well for their passion and their zeal for our community, because it truly is a great place to be, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Crocker and Amber Holbeck. If she doesn't, she's going to lose her place.
I would imagine, should we only start?
No, you start. I called you first.
Before I get started, I want to know, I'm sure it's public record, the remonstrations, right? Can you tell us who those were, right now?
Could you, could you, could you receive it, you buy email from them?
I'm just curious, because like, the...
It's not forty-two people.
No, it's not forty-two people. It's probably five, six, seventy people.
There are some property owners that own several properties.
And I'm one of them, so...
Yeah, so it's, actually, it's based on the assessed value of the district.
Yeah, I understand, but how many people, like...
Yeah, I, you know, we just got these this afternoon, and I had a chance to go through them.
I'm sure you'll be willing to email that.
Yeah, I can email.
Well, that's fine, I just, I just want to, you know, I can only speak on behalf of myself and my partner, Chris Edmiston. We own seven properties on Main Street. We have been, we were one of the very early believers in Downtown Oregon City.
Yes, you were.
I was also, first of all, I just want to say, I'm a hundred percent in support of the EID. That said, my partner, Chris, and I, we said, look, we don't like the way it's structured right now. I was boots-on-the-ground lobbying for the EID. I lobbied to tax myself four years ago with Lloyd. Lloyd and I walked building to building, property owner, property owner, lobbying to tax ourselves. I worked with Lloyd, I said, let's not make it, let's not cap it at two thousand, let's make it one thousand nine hundred and fifty, because that looks just a little bit less than two thousand.
Right.
We knew, and we talked about, should we make it four years, five years, seven years? Lloyd, and there were other people involved, we made an effort to make it long enough that we knew we'd had stable funding for Main Street, Oregon City at the time, but short enough that we would be able to prove to folks that it worked, and then we could redraw the boundaries to include people that we had to literally pick, we had to draw the boundary and exclude certain properties because we know, we knew we would get a no vote.
Yes.
Those business owners, those property owners have benefited every bit as much as I have. Chris and I pay fourteen, plus and minus, round numbers, I don't know exactly, around fourteen thousand dollars a year to support the EID, which is fine, I'm happy to do it. But it's important that the other property owners that we specifically carved out, they got four years of a free ride, and their property values went up every bit as much as ours, if not more. It's important for us now that they need to start paying their fair share. That, that's part of the issue that we have.
Sure.
Some of the other things that were brought up, like board, board makeup, you know, give me a break. I was on the board for three years because I wanted to, and I was active, and I asked to be a part of it, and I was welcomed in. I don't buy that. The, the use of the funds, you know what, if I'm not on the board, if I'm not active in figuring out what we should do as, as an organization, I'm going to trust that Jonathan knows what he's doing, I'm going to trust that Jonathan has a plan. I think, I think there was something said earlier, I think there is, it's unfortunate the transition from Lloyd to Jonathan happened when it did, because I think probably in hindsight, and Jonathan and I have talked a lot, in hindsight, I think what Jonathan has, has learned is that the property owners were the ones paying the bill, and we had to do that because when we, when we started the EID four years ago, the retailers we had at the time were not interested in being involved.
Right.
They did not want to pay anything. So we took it upon ourselves as property owners to make this thing go. That will benefit us, no doubt, but also benefit the retailers as well. So, all that to say, I think Jonathan's on the right path in helping to build the retail environment, because that ultimately will benefit the property owners, but at the same time, I think the property owners say, look, we've done this for four years, it needs to be tweaked. And I think that's, the bulk of the remonstrations are just saying, look, we want to support it, it needs to be tweaked. Number one, we got to get the people involved who got a free ride for the last four years, let's look at the boundary. Number two, let's look at alternative funding. There's retailers here now who are in support of the EID, I know, and I know that they're not going to probably be able to afford fourteen thousand dollars a year, like, like multiple, like property owners who own multiple buildings, but I'm sure they'd be willing to pitch in something, and we need to look at that as well. Let's see, last thing I want to say too, is that David, did David, said that, you know, this is an opportunity, I truly believe that, and I told Jonathan that yesterday, he came to my office and we talked for a while, I said, I believe this is an opportunity, let's talk to the property owners who want some fixed, some changes. I think this could be done really quickly, I really do, because I know Chris and I, we own seven buildings, I don't know what percentage of the, of the assessed value that is. Somebody said something to the effect of T5 put us over the edge, which I take offense to, because, I mean, there's a lot of property owners, it isn't just T5. But I think there's probably four or five people that you just have to get in a room, say, here's what we want to do, and you get this approved, and it's, it's really that easy, it really is that easy. It's, it's not, people are, heck no, we don't want this, it's, yeah, we want this, we want to support the, the program, we just want to tweak it a little bit.
Just going to say, I, I can read the names if the commission desires, I can do that for the record.
Yeah, that's, you can do it, and there's no reason you can't do it, I suppose. I guess what I want to sort of do is avoid any embarrassment this might cause to anybody, and if it's a case of him seeing the names and being able to talk to those individuals.
Well...
I mean, we, we can do it, it's been requested, and I don't know what that means to...
There's nothing wrong with it.
Clearly public records.
It's public records, yeah.
So, John, would you just be able to let him give you the names, so you know who you're talking to, as opposed to in a public meeting exposing the names and...
Okay, I guess, I guess what I want to say is, how many, how many people, how many votes was it? Was it five, seven, fourteen property owners?
Let me go through it.
Mayor, it's actually part of the published, it's part of the published record.
Yes.
It wasn't available till late today, but it's...
I understand, but we, we've got a screen, an audience looks at this on TV, and a screen, you know, online and so forth, and...
Absolutely.
I guess what I'm, I'm just looking at is from the standpoint of, these people can be talked to without, perhaps, having their names stated at a public meeting.
Right.
And, but yes, both supporters and those that are opposed, this is a public process, we just have to be sure that we're open with that information.
I doubt there was too many that said, absolutely, I don't want any part of it. I'm, maybe there's a few, but...
Let me, let me read the letter.
Okay, go ahead.
This is, these aren't all the objections I received, but this is the majority. It said, this is not a rejection of the Main Street organization. We do not, we do not support the EID renewal in its current form. There are several areas of concern that need to be revisited. We would welcome the idea of listening to a new proposal that addresses the following: board makeup, maximum assessment amounts, EID boundaries, City of Oregon City general fund contribution, spending priorities.
So in my opinion, I think it's mainly about the, the boundaries and, and the maximum assessment. I think you can increase the boundaries, reduce the assessment a little bit. The whole general funding thing, I mean, I think that's certain people, board makeup, spending priorities, if they want to get on the vote, on the board and talk about the budget and what the spending priority should be, they should do that, in my opinion.
Yeah.
If they don't agree with it, they can talk to Jonathan, and I'm sure he'd be willing to listen, but for me, for T5, it's more about the boundary, getting more people who are benefiting to actually pay into the, to the kitty. If, if this is breakfast, you know, the property owners right now are the pigs, I mean, we're all in, and a lot of the other folks are the chickens, they're, they're giving the egg, so...
I love it, Rob. Good, great, Rob.
And, and, and I know you weren't criticizing Jonathan for the work he's done, there, there, at the, at the beginning, I think there was a perception among a lot of the retailers that, oh, it's all the property owners, and we don't get a voice, and Jonathan, I think, has been trying to correct that misperception, and in the process, there's kind of been a change in the approach.
Yeah.
And we, I think we all understand.
Yep.
And I think you understand.
Absolutely, and initially, you know, it was all about big projects. I mean, Lloyd did an amazing job with writing grants and getting millions of dollars to help improve the, just the look of, of the, the street, and now priorities, priorities have shifted, and we need to work on the retail mix, so...
Yep.
I think it's headed the right direction. I think the bulk of the property owners are for the EID, we just need to tweak it.
Right, very good.
Thank you.
Sorry, that was longer than three minutes, I'm sure.
That's okay. Important, important stuff.
Only fifteen minutes, not bad.
Amber, you can only speak for thirty seconds. You turn your...
Amber Holbeck, Oregon City Chamber of Commerce, and I had prepared a letter to read into the record that would be showing the chamber's support for downtown and the EID in light of where we're at. What I'd like to do is just share our support for the commission in how you have really taken downtown on as a core project, a very important, vital economic project for this city. And I think that is vital as we move into the next commission, and I feel like there's going to be support for that. But the word is heard and understood that property owners who are asked to pay into the EID, they need to be heard, they need to be at the table, and I believe, as a Downtown Oregon City Association board member, non-voting board member, that we will go back to the drawing board with a renewed sense of everybody needs to be there at the table to develop what that looks like. The work is definitely not done in downtown. Currently, the association isn't yet where it needs to be in terms of a stable financial package, but with some tweaks, I believe that that can be done, and we can continue to see, we can all enjoy a thriving downtown, and we are well on our way. Not quite there yet, but I think we've heard that everybody needs to be at that table, and that is indeed what we will be doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Ivan Senti and William Gifford, please.
You're my speaking buddy. We were here together last time. Hi. I just, um...
Your name and...
Oh, sorry. My name is Tara Van Senti, I'm the owner of Denim Salvage, down on Main Street, and I was actually here recently with my speaking buddy, showing our support and our passion for the EID and why we support it from our different standpoints, and a lot of what I wanted to say and/or show my, show my support was already said tonight, and it is so, at first, the news was, you know, kind of a Debbie Downer, for sure, but at the same time, I do believe it's an opportunity, and even more so, seeing how many business owners are here tonight after we've, we're all downtown all day. All of you that have shown your continued support as we've gone through this process, and I just wanted to say very specifically, thank you very much to the downtown organization, Jonathan and David, and all of the work that you've done so far. You're very much at the forefront of kind of moving this whole train forward as we're growing and learning and expanding and getting more and more momentum, and please don't let this slow you down. It's not going to let, slow me down, I, I know the rest of us that are here in support, we're not going to slow down, so please keep moving us forward, and we really, really appreciate it.
You do.
How are you?
Oh, nice.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
You can talk to wino after the meeting, though.
I think you're off to the bow down, you know. It's a good thing you're good-natured.
Wino won.
Winos are good natured.
Eric, wino, get us back together here, come on.
Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford, I live in Oregon City. I don't think that there's anyone in the city that would challenge the tremendous improvements that have happened to downtown, not just Main Street, but the whole downtown area. It's phenomenal, it's something that we are all very, very proud of. The way that it has been funded has been honorable, but it's not as stable as, of course, we would like it to be. I, I would like to echo Mr. Crocker's comments about how I suspect that... I, I would like to echo, uh, Mr. Crocker's comments about how I suspect that most of the property owners are very much in favor of the program. They just need it tweaked, and for that, it's going to take a little extra time. Um, I've heard, I've talked to some of the property owners about, uh, about some of their objections, and I've heard lots of comments about, "Well, it's not affecting my end of the street," or it's, you know, "It's only cosmetic," or, you know, "Not much else can be done. We've already, you know, made it look as pretty as we can," and, and, um, I, I think those are not as effective arguments as they could be. The EID somehow needs to be continued, and my comment is just, uh, one that I haven't really heard expressed, although we talked a little bit about changing the boundaries. What hasn't been done with the EID is consider farther on the north end of, uh, of the, of Main Street and of that whole area up there. There are a lot of additional properties that could be included, and with more properties and a broader net, um, there would be more people contributing, and that could reduce the individual costs. And so, uh, that's the only piece of additional information that I would, that I would hope that, um, the, um, the consideration is given to when redefining the boundaries of the EID, that a larger area and more, uh, more property owners would have an opportunity to, uh, not just contribute, but also benefit from, uh, what is being done with that, uh, in that EID, because it's just phenomenal. And my biggest concern personally is loss of momentum, which is echoing Commissioner Smith's comments, because if we lose the momentum that we've built up, it's going to take a long time to get over the inertia of starting over again, and we don't want to start over again. We can't start over again. We need to keep it moving and, uh, and find a solution for that. But just one of the things that I would suggest is consider, uh, redefining the boundaries farther north to pull in some more properties. Those are my comments. It's not as cute, but-
Thank you. You were much cuter than-
You were much cuter.
And that's, that's a, that's a major discussion. I think a lot of those properties we're in when we originally had it, it had to be pulled out because they didn't have the property support, uh, property owner's support. But that, that image may have changed amongst some of those property owners.
I think Mr. Crocker made the point that now that some of those, uh, some of those properties that got the free ride can see the fact that their values have increased, that they're, that they can, they can charge higher rents, that they, you know, that they've got all the benefits, that they should be able to be persuaded. Now get in and, you know, no such thing as a free ride. Get on board.
Thank you very much.
Nothing like just free.
Alex Jansen.
Good evening. I'm Alex Jansen, uh, 722 Main Street. Um, I'm a property owner and a business owner in downtown. Um, Jonathan, I won't be hugging you. But I just wanted to just voice my support for the EID, uh, voice my support for the Main Street Association. Um, and to, um, you know, Commissioner Smith, I think you hit it just right on the head. There's just, there's just, turning back is just not an option. Losing momentum is not an option. Um, we've accomplished, uh, a lot. Uh, I would, I would just ask that the commission consider alternate sources of funding, um, and, um, certainly expansion of the EID and inclusion of the Willamette Falls development in that. And, uh, you know, I'm concerned as that evolves that it doesn't become an us and them scenario. Uh, it's going to be a very powerful constituent in our community. Um, but, um, we've got to find a way to work together with them, because that is going to be part of the downtown core as well. So, um, I think that trying to bring that developer in as part of the dialogue at this early stage, I think would be, pay big dividends, you know, as we, as we, you know, work together with them.
Mm-hmm.
You know, moving on down the road, so that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Tom Guyle.
Again, Tom Guyle, business owner, Oregon City resident. Just wanted to, uh, say an observation. I've been listening to Mr. Crocker's comments. Spot-on, really great observations. Same with, I'm agreeing with William Gifford.
It's Christmas.
It's a wonderful light.
Wonderful light. They're wonderful.
North end being included. I know that I had heard, I've been, attended a meeting recently in downtown. I also wanted to express my appreciation for the EID. I'm probably one of the newest owners down on Main Street, and I've appreciated watching Jonathan up on, uh, power ladders up there, putting lights up in the cold wind and the rain. Brave man. Uh, don't start crying. But somebody, as I said at the last meeting that, uh, the city manager and others were at, uh, somebody's doing something right, because I was getting people coming in from Troutdale, Scappus, all over the city, and so-
Yeah.
The other communities, so it was great. Um, one solution I'd heard was, "We'll pass along the fees to the, um, business owners, the, the vendors, the tenants." And that's already being done in some instances. Um, when I signed my lease with my landlord, he told me about that there is a assessment, and said if it ever increased, we would have to increase that. But for some of us, that's already been included in it, and I doubt if that was ever stopped, that that would be changed to lease payment.
Right, right. I'm sure you're right.
But I'm, I'm, if it's included in that, as I was told, I'm happy to pay that, because I think that Jonathan and Jessica and the rest of the group, the board, is doing a good job to do the best they can to promote it. I grew up in the, in the community of Multloma, and I used to go down to Main Street all the time in Multloma. It's Capitol Highway, but, and so with John's Landing and Port Sacol on Swan Island. I've seen all those and what's the support from the city of Portland or those communities has done. So totally support the EID for what they're doing, and again, agree with Mr. Crocker's assessment. Maybe it needs some tweaking, and if the landlords work with the tenants. It's really hard to send in a meeting when you're the tenant and you've got the landlords and you're both discussing the same thing. It's, you know, my landlord was in that meeting, and I was being really cautious not to say by name, that my landlord does this.
Yeah.
But it's, it's good to see that they're wanting to talk and work together, because I think there's good solutions for downtown to make it grow before we get lost in the Blue Heron excitement. Because if we don't let Main Street thrive now, with all the opening of the Blue Heron sometime in the future, we may get lost. So, thanks, Jonathan, everybody, and for working together.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you so much. Jill Smart.
Hi, Jill.
And you get to share your wisdom with us.
Hi, my name's Jill Smart. I own NB Boutique on Railroad, which is on the dark side of the Main Street.
Grand prize winner.
Exactly. Um, yes, I was the grand prize winner for the Snowflake Raffle, which I just want to say, there's still effects from that. Thank you very much, Jonathan. It's been great. I've actually had the best week since I opened 18 months ago this past week. So. Um, as to the, to the EID being passed on, um, my landlord actually came to me, and we share a landlord, uh, and he asked, "What do you think?" Because, of course, the board had reached out to all the, all of the landlords, so I find it odd that it's coming down to the last day to be turned in for commentary. I mean, we talked back in the fall, and he said, "Well, what do you think?" And I said, "Well, I think it's a really good thing. I think it's great." And he's like, "Great, we'll raise your rent." And I said, "Okay, I get it," because, of course, he's got to make money too. But, um, you know, if you are a landlord and you're not passing it on to your renters,
Mm-hmm.
I think they probably have classes in property management. Anyway. But I, you know, assessing it to both business owners and property, you're basically doubling up. And we are, one of these days, I would like to pay myself, so, um, you know, we are just getting started. I'm one of the old retailers on the street now after being here 18 months. The only person who's been there longer than me is our friend, the Hat Lady. So, you know, it's, it's just fledgling. It's just getting going. Um, Pam Tatum from the flat, who couldn't be here tonight. Um, she actually had a conversation with her landlord, who's one of the people on your list, and he had never approached her before today, but she approached him and said, "I think you're wrong." And the reason that she moved, she was a business owner in Milwaukee, that she moved here was specifically because of the Main Street program. Milwaukee had been going along pretty well there for a while, just with the business owners,
Mm-hmm.
but it stumbled, and there's people that are looking to move here. I think actually probably ripe for the picking for us to move, move some of those businesses over here. We've done one step with the facade. Step two is people coming in and encouraging businesses to come in. Now I think, you know, Jonathan and I have talked about it, and it's like, step three is specifically targeting certain businesses to come in and fill in those places. Without the EID and before the EID, a lot of people still own properties down here, but there wasn't a lot of stuff getting done.
Right.
Now it's getting done, and I think to lose Jonathan and to lose Jessica would be a tragedy, and it would make me rethink, even though I live here and my commute is great. It's just down the hill. Um, it would be a blow to downtown. I can't really describe it any other way, because I'm still getting people who live along the Bluff coming down and saying, "I have not been downtown in years, in years. How long have you been here?" And they literally live in houses that look down on my business, and they have not taken the elevator down. And now they're coming down, and they're hanging out, and they're shopping, and they're eating. And the lady that won the Snowflake Raffle actually is one of the biggest cheerleaders in this town, and she and her husband eat down here a couple nights a week, and she goes to all of the stores and shops. And I think she did all of her shopping for the holidays in downtown Oregon City this year, so. Keep up the good work, people. I appreciate it personally, and not just as a business owner, but as a resident. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
I'm going to try this. Randy Hoffteiser, is that right?
Yeah, that's really close.
Well, you, you correct me.
Hoffteiser.
Hoffteiser. That wasn't close, wasn't it?
It was very close. You don't even know. Hoffteiser.
Go ahead and give your name.
Hi, my name is Randy Hoffteiser, and I'm a part of this community. And as with last year, I am a business owner next to Jill on the dark side. Um, I love it there, though. It's beautiful, and as our community grows, I think I'm going to be happy that I chose that green, beautiful spot. Um, uh, I, when I, I, I want to be brief. I will try to be as brief as possible, but I moved here about 11 years ago, and I said to my husband at the time, "What have you done? I'm a girl from New York. Where have you taken me? You've taken me to the middle of nowhere." And this town looked like a ghost town.
Yeah.
Other than if you wanted to partake in some decent shots around town, so.
And that's drinking shots.
And when I came to Oregon, I worked for a local jeweler, an Oregon-based jeweler. Um, but my field was always antique jewelry, and that was my passion. But coming to a new place, anyway, things happen, and I decide that I'm going to open up a small business on a shoestring once again. I had a business in Houston, and now I'm starting over. So people were like, "Well, where do you want to open up your store?" I was like, "You know what? I'm going to open up in Oregon City where I'm living." And they're like, "Why? Why would you open up an antique jewelry store in Oregon City? You're going to fall flat on your face." And you know what? It's hard. It's not an easy, uh, deal here in Oregon City, especially when I opened a year ago. It's getting better. You know, they say, "Build it and they will come." And I think that the EID is right behind all of us in the idea of build it and they will come. It's wonderful that, I can't even imagine if we continue to go forward the way that we are right now in really focusing on making it a cohesive town, city. Small, but a city, a living city. Um, and, uh, yeah, so, so, um, I'm appreciative for everything they do. If they take it away, I think that it's based on a lot of greed, I hate to say, um, shortsightedness, because in the long term, when I looked at the flyer that Jonathan gave to us about the meeting for next month, about the development of downtown and relation to the Mill project and, and all that happening, which is so exciting for, I mean, people are going to come here. They're going to come, and, and now they're even like wanting to stay a little bit, you know? Whereas before, it was like in and out and run out of town. Um, but I want to say one thing, that I believe that the stronger we become as a core downtown, we have to remain the backbone for the upcoming Mill project, not the other way around. And that's what I have to say, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Carol Foley.
Yes. I want to thank everybody who came to speak on behalf of the Main Street program, and everybody who's written letters on behalf of the Main Street program. It has the support, I feel, of the entire community, um, the staff, the commission. Everywhere I go, um, when I talk to people as the commissioner or just, you know, as a citizen, um, I hear how great Main Street is and just what a big difference. And it used to be so, you know, dark and rundown, and, and what's going on down there? And, and I tell them about the program, and it really was, you know, a grassroots effort started by people, and now it's one of six accredited, uh, Main Street programs in the state. And that is a huge, huge honor. And, um, but also as a commissioner, it's important to, um, also listen to great things. It's wonderful. But also listen to concerns, and we've heard concerns. Um, I'm appointed to the Main Street Board as the commission representative, and from the beginning, I heard some concerns, just about being transparent, and we took that. We took that all to heart. We put the, um, the bylaws on the website. Um, we made, uh, you know, different, different adjustments, really trying to talk to people more. Um, when our, um, um, executive director left, we took a lot of time and care and really opened up for people to be involved in that process. And we chose somebody that has, Jonathan, that has the skill set that's needed for, for the next incarnation of Main Street. You know, we've done the beautiful work in the streetscape and, and received all the grants, and now it's time to market and make sure that we keep those businesses there and, you know, get more businesses there and really, uh, work together as far as networking and marketing. And I, I feel that, um, that the board has listened, and it's important to get more people involved. We opened ourselves up to the, um, review. We did an Oregon, uh, Main Street review, and so Sherry Stewart came down and did that review, and trying to look at what we can do better. I really think it's an economic issue. I think when you have many property owners that own many different properties, they look at the bottom line of how much they're paying, and it's a big number. And I understand that's scary. I'm a property owner, so it's, it's scary when you have added things. And the economy's been tough. Everything's gone up. Water rates have gone up. Sewer rates have gone up. Every taxes have gone up. And so I don't think it's so much about people not supporting Main Street. I think people do support Main Street. But we kind of need to look at the bottom line. How can we soften that edge and make it more, um, palatable? How can we make it work better economically for people? And, um, there's more openings on the board now. There's five more openings that we're looking to fill. And there's the committee structure that's been reinstated, so everybody really can get involved, and it is important. I mean, it's too bad we're hearing about these concerns, and we see this letter that was passed around. It was a form letter, and people just sign it. And I think everybody maybe have, has a different concern, and we do need to get together and hear specifically why people signed that letter. And I think a lot of it's going to be economics, but we do need to keep moving forward and taking in information, and, and we will.
I've got myself and David Frazier. I'll call me first.
I guess we know where you stand.
What I do, I, the, the commitment of the city is strong. Most of, I'm, I'm sure most of the taxes that are collected there now because of the, of, of being an urban, urban mill district, in fact, goes back into the district. Uh, it may be if somebody was, I mean, some suggestions were a city contribution. It may be if somebody was, I mean, some suggestions were city contributions. I believe early on, we did contribute to the Main Street Program through the Urban Renewal Commission at the beginning. And the next commission could look at that, but what that would do is it would take away from some of the monies available for the storefront grants, for the adaptive reuse grants we've been very successful with, but maybe there's some balancing that occur there. I agree completely with Commissioner Smith and everybody else, we want to keep walking forward on this thing. Because ultimately, it's not only about Main Street. If we go up, we demonstrate a big success there, we're going to see a transition on the 7th Street and Malala corridors. We often go along there and see some eyesores and wish we could be doing some more there. But it is critical that we have this jewel continuing to be polished, to be reshined, to add some more jewels to the ring and so forth, because I think it will trigger economic development, not only at the Falls Legacy area, not only in the north end of the Main Street and it'll trigger development in the rest of Oregon City and that's critical.
And I think it already has.
No, well, I do too.
If you look at 7th Street, Malala Avenue, five years ago, it's a different place, too. And it's part of what's happening downtown.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other commissioners who want to speak, then David? David?
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I want to tag team on that a little bit because I do get calls from cities around the state of Oregon asking Oregon City, "How did you do this program? How come it's been so much more successful than so many others?" And it is a team effort. Just to remind the commission, you currently put in $50,000 a year, it's been almost two years since you did a budget, but you're putting in $50,000 annually from your general fund as a match, because when the Main Street Program, then they called it Main Street, but it was the EID the first time around. Some of the business owners raised, I thought was a legitimate question, they were afraid that the city was going to, the money that we were currently spending at the time was that same amount and they were afraid that we would withdraw that extra, and this is over and above what we spend in other parts of the city, so it's a concentrated expenditure. And they were afraid that we would withdraw that if they voted in the EID and just backfill the regular tax contribution with the EID dollars. So I made a pledge to them that I would budget for that additional funding and you supported that, all of you and the Budget Committee. We had to talk about it, we had to explain it, there were lots of hard questions, but in the end, you supported that and we've continued to do that. And I'm pledging tonight that unless the future commission directs me otherwise, I'm going to continue to do that. We might even look at inflation and see what we can do to help there in additional ways. But I think what's really important for me to leave here is to know that this commission, that's currently giving us direction, a lot of the soldier, this starts a conversation and it's clear, you know, when you get remonstrances the same day, it's pretty clear that the conversations that could have happened, there just hasn't been that opportunity. So I look at this as a beginning of a conversation with people that object and I think Mr. Crocker really summed it up well. And some of the leaders of this program, the founding leaders of this program, some of them are here tonight, they've been busy doing other things with their business and maybe didn't, weren't engaged as soon as they could have been and I think they've awakened to the possibility of losing this great program. And so, the soldiers that are going to lead that conversation are out here and I've got one on my right and one on my left and I'm going to dispatch them with your permission to assist Mr. Stone as much as they possibly can over the next month or two, to try to stimulate those conversations, forge compromises, come up with creative ideas on how we can salvage the program. Because I believe, and I believe the commission does, that it's a very viable, it's been one of the most successful Main Street Programs on the West Coast and it would be, I think, sort of a tragedy not to continue it. So with your consent, and I'd like to know, is there anyone that objects to us using what staff resources we have available to assist in the effort?
And the continuing commission support that you have going into the next...
Yes, and hearing no objections, I'll take that as consensus and we will proceed to help as much as we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to go ahead and move on to the next agenda item since we are not able to take action.
Do we have to do anything with this?
Don't leave, this is a big one.
Thanks for hanging out with us.
This is a very important one coming up, folks, because this resolution just came to us in the last couple of days and it's exciting. We're talking about various items that we started during this commission. The next one is Resolution 1415, adopting a supplemental budget to the 2013-2015 biannual budget and authorizing a $500,000 interfund loan from Public Works Building Fund to the Police Building Fund and authorizing the city manager to enter into a real property sales agreement. Wyatt Parno.
Mr. Mayor, before Wyatt begins to talk about the financing piece, I just want to explain the logistics of what has occurred just in the last 36 hours or so. Our consult, the reason this is on your agenda, originally it was on your agenda only for the financing piece, but not authorizing me to close on the transaction. What's happened in that period of time is that we have received assurances from our environmental consultant and letters and documentation to support their analysis that make us feel confident that there aren't going to be environmental concerns on there that are going to be unreasonable for us to deal with. And so because of that newfound confidence, as you recall, that's what we were holding back on before in not closing. And I talked to the school superintendent who was here tonight and we're really looking forward to proceeding. He's sort of spent the money already. So, he's been a motivated seller and we've been a motivated purchaser and it's worked out really well. But I wanted to give that background to the commission because that's what accelerated the authorization tonight for you to approve me closing on the transaction, which is, I think, kind of timely because it's really your last big thing and it's a lot more important than a consent agenda. So, I wanted to set that stage so that Mr. Parno could take it from there.
All right, thank you Mayor Neely and city commissioners, aloha. It's been a great night of celebrating our successes and great improv as well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I've received three emails from folks, including my staff, that are watching this commission meeting and now the word has spread, so I appreciate it. It's been a very sobering evening for me. No, I'm kidding. So, among, and so it's kind of fun. Among the amazing accomplishments that we've talked about this evening, of course, is your dedication to public safety for the community and that's something near and dear to my heart. Jim and I talk about that a lot. As part of your goal-setting for the 2013 through 2015 biennium in the last couple of years, you directed staff to pursue development of a new police station. And as you know, the existing station is significantly under capacity for what we need for our officers, it's also not seismically sound, to say the least. I know Jim could explain it a lot better and he's come before you in a couple of meetings prior to this and explained what we're trying to do there with the facility. There's been a real opportunity that's come available to us, which is to be able to purchase from the school district, the Mount Pleasant property. So that benefits the school, which had a closed property and also could benefit us greatly for a much-needed police station. We didn't, we weren't aware of this great opportunity at the time we put together the budget. So, under local budget law from the state of Oregon, we're required to follow certain procedures and we're doing that. We advertised in notices in the newspaper about a public hearing, so I'd like to ask you to please hold a public hearing and subsequent to that, adopt Resolution Number 14-15, the supplemental budget that would give us the budget authority to make the purchase and also authorize an interfund loan. Really quickly, we've found an opportunity to be able to fund the purchase legitimately with some funds that the police department had developed through development agreements in the past. And also there's a small interfund loan from the Public Works Facility Fund and, which will be repaid in five years and I just think it's a great opportunity for us to make something happen that's really important to the community. So with that, I'd like to ask you to hold the public hearing and then please consider adopting Resolution 14-15. Happy to entertain any questions.
I will take the commission questions first before I open the public hearing. Commissioner Smith?
Couple of things. When I first got elected to the commission, the police department was one of the major concerns I had, not only staffing, but future of the police department. Had major concerns about the purchase of this building, this resolves that. I think this resolves both of those issues in, to the long future. I think it's a huge decision tonight, not only just for the police department, but for the future buildings that might be on that site that we have a plan for, that we, the future growth of City Hall. I think this is a massive, massive decision, one that really, I think, the next commission should be really happy about because it puts in place kind of a piece of land that we know can sustain some growth for quite a long period of time. I will also say that as much as I want to make the motion and as much as I want to fully support this, I will be abstaining because I am an employee of the Oregon City School District.
With that, Commissioner Polly?
I had a question about the interfund loan. So, then will that money not be available for Public Works and, or when will it be and how does that work?
That's an excellent question, Commissioner Polly. And so, and I hate to use an attorney term or an accounting term, but it kind of depends. And I'm not, we're not really worried about that, per se, and there's some discussion about future and how we're going to figure out funding the police facility. The loan could be prepaid at any time without penalty and it is, it's a smaller portion of what we're working on with the Public Works monies. So, it's our intent to pay it back as soon as we can. I don't think it puts us at risk, per se.
So you're just changing the line items so that you can have that money available, basically?
Yeah, it's definitely, it's a loan from a specific fund, from the Public Works Fund that will need to be repaid for that $500,000. And it's most appropriate to transact it as a loan right now and repay it over the next five years maximum, but it could be repaid earlier.
So it shouldn't limit us, anything with Public Works, any of those decisions, it shouldn't limit us with that?
There's a lot of things that would transact that would have to make it so it wouldn't limit us.
Yeah, if you were to, if you were to attempt to spend the same amount of money next week, you'd be $500,000 short. But the police department has a means of repaying this money, I think, at a more accelerated rate, as Mr. Parno mentioned. So this is really just one department borrowing from another department with what's likely to be an accelerated payback schedule. But we'll know a lot more about that after the retreat, when the priorities are set. And my guess is we'll have priorities in both of those departments and I think we'll be okay.
Commissioner Moore?
Well, that was my concern also is, because we have been talking about a Public Works location. So, that's, I want the police to move forward, but I also want to take care of Public Works.
So just to be clear on the size of this, the Public Works Fund is several million dollars?
Yes.
And this is a very small portion of that and by the time we would be ready to build, even on the current site or some other site for Public Works, I think we'll be well on our way to paying it back.
Okay.
Since I failed to close the public hearing, we'll have to hear from William Gifford.
Did you open it?
Yeah.
Oh.
So we, we've all known, we've all been speaking as part of the public hearing.
We would like to hear from William Gifford.
Yes.
Not that we have to.
We would love to hear, William.
Mr. Mayor, city commissioners, my name is William Gifford, I live in Oregon City. Pull the trigger on this deal, get it done. I mean, it's absolutely the right thing to do. We've talked about it a long time and it's for the good of the city, it's, I mean, it's certainly the school district is behind it and I think the city will be behind it. It's not going to cost them any, really, it's not going to cost them anything, so let's get it done.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing and I can speak. Let me just mention my one concern. Wherever those monies are identified in Public Works, do not have them come out of wastewater. We've, we're increasing the, we're increasing the, we're increasing the fee on wastewater services and we've got to make sure that we treat that with the same urgency that we're treating the police department because we've asked our ratepayers, we didn't ask them, we told them that you're going to have to pay more for those wastewater services and I think you've got to be very sensitive to that.
I agree, Your Honor, and that's the case.
Any other comments? Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I'd like to approve the...
Oh, no, let Betty and I do it.
Oh, okay.
You're all moving.
All right, I guess I have other opportunities, so.
Move to approve Resolution 14-15.
Seconded by Commissioner Roth. Both please.
Does it need to be read?
It's not, sorry, it's not ordinance. There's four yays and as Commissioner Smith gave his reasons, there's one abstention. With that, I have a motion for the consent agenda. Yes. Should be a white one. Do I hear a motion for the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Oh.
I seconded it.
Oh, no.
You've got plenty of time to second things.
Yes, I do.
It's been moved by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Roth. The vote, you know, is on the screen is unanimous. With that, city managers report.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Want to say some more good things about us and make us feel real good?
Couple. First of all, the purchase and sale agreement has been signed by me, approved just a form by the city attorney, so pursuant to your vote just a few minutes ago, so that's already done.
Wait a minute, is there a mayor's signature required?
No.
I guess not.
Also, I wanted to, another...
For the resolution it is.
You have a, I know you get a lot of these and I hope you're not totally sick and tired of them, but this is the last goals progress report that you will get from me and it shows tremendous progress on all the goals that you put in place almost, well, 18 months ago. So I want to pass that around, there's a copy for each of you. And for you that are staying on the commission, please take a look at that and keep in mind, as we move into our next goal-setting, that it's very, very easy for us to overextend our capacity. So, it's more important probably for us to do 10 things really well than 20 things not so well. So just, we have to figure out what the priority is and cut back where we can and make sure we stay focused on the prime opportunities. Also, Eric has some more accomplishments that I don't think are on this list, it's one more and it's kind of a big deal and we're really happy to report that. Eric?
Thank you. We received word from the state Economic Development Department on Monday that our application for an enterprise zone has been approved. To the effect of January 1, 2015 and end in December 2025.
Good job.
December when?
December 31st.
What year did it end?
2025.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
It's going to be a great date.
Did you hear, William?
I don't, I don't listen to William anymore. I don't have to listen to William anymore.
Well, you do for a few more minutes.
No, it's over, he can't speak anymore.
I just wanted to add a quick thing, that we've got two companies that are interested in expanding and taking advantage of this program.
That's right. Can you let us know what kind of word they're thinking about it?
They're expanding in their existing location.
Very good.
That's very good, thank you, Eric. And so next I have both good news and bad news about our sewer system. You recall a few months ago, we had a spill and there was a DEQ fine and it was during a storm event and the fine was almost $10,000. The good news is that's been lowered through mitigation efforts of our Public Works Department down to about $6,000. The bad news is that we had another incident while we were trying to repair a line with an older line and I'm going to let John talk about that for a minute.
Gosh, you stole the good news, Dave. Opening with the good news.
You can, you can repeat it afterwards.
I will want to acknowledge that we got some legal help with that as well. So, Public Works and the bill helped us quite a bit with DEQ and they're taking a pretty hard position on these spills. They're basically saying, anytime, any drop of wastewater gets to waters of the state, they're going to file an action and, you know, probably rightly so, but it's a little tough to take because it feels like we just had a couple of these, well, we have just had a couple of these. So, what I asked DEQ today, because they haven't issued the letter yet, but they're, kind of, they called us on the phone to say, "Hey, we're going to get you a letter." So I thought that was good of them, but across the state, there's been 400, over 400 of these things throughout the state, because that was my first question, is, you know, is Oregon City being signaled out here? Because I know, I know there's a lot of sewer overflows throughout the state. So, whenever we have a sewer overflow, typically they're small. This one here was small. We have to fill out a sanitary sewer overflow report, you know, give them all the facts, tell them how we responded. In this case, we had a buried pipeline, a pressure force main pipeline, coupler broke just like, and so it's... just like, and so, it's under pressure, just like a water line. When a water line has a leak in it, it starts bubbling up out of the ground. We didn't. In this case, there's a storm sewer right alongside of it, buried as well. We didn't notice the leak. It was reported by somebody walking along the road and noticed that bubbling up, and it only happens intermittently, right? When the pumps kick on, it bubbles, and then it stops, bubbles and stops. So we didn't, we didn't notice it, but what did spill off got to the stormwater system and got to waters of the state. So, we'll go through this process, hopefully, a little simpler than the last one, because it's a small spill. We estimated about 1,700 gallons of sewage that may or may not have gotten to the waters of the state, but it was a tough one to estimate, because we really didn't see it. So, they considered a small spill, but they also recognized that it got to the creek. So, and this happened right near Barclay Hills Pump Station, so the Barclay Hills Park, there's a storm, underground storm system there, and that's, that's where it went. And so, we just wanted to give you that update. We don't know the fine amount, or where they're going to go with this. They still may decide not to find us, but they do sound like they're trying to follow the law to the T. So, we'll do the same.
And John has assured me that, given the rate increases that you approved recently, that moving forward in the future, replacement of these older lines like this one will make it less likely that we have future spills. And I'm grateful for that, and I think that's good news.
That's the punchline. As we see the rate increases that you've already approved, this is actually a line that's much further down the road. It's not really a capacity issue, but it's one of those old force mains. It's made out of a, kind of a special material that they don't put in the ground anymore. So, you know, it's definitely on the replacement horizon.
But it was not part of our moratorium area?
No, it was not part of the moratorium.
No, I'm just kind of curious. Had we not reported it, would the state have found out? I mean, we, we simply reported because we reported, right?
Yeah, we, we're...
Yes, I know, I understand.
We're obligated to report.
Yeah. So, Your Honor, I close my report.
Thank you. That leaves it to me, I guess. I, I'm going to say something that I regretted. At the last IMPACT meeting I was not able to attend, I was in Yakima. And I probably should have contacted Kathy earlier, but then, when I, at the time opportunity came to contact Kathy, she was ill. It was the day, you know, the study session was before that. The climate smart community motion was put forward at the IMPACT meeting. Every representative from Washington County, every representative from, I believe, Multnomah County, voted for the climate smart communities. There was a major process that involved all the elected officials. They got the, I should, I should say, all the, all the elected, all the elected officials. And, great discussion, but unfortunately, only a minority of the Clackamas County representatives there at that meeting voted for the climate smart communities package. And unfortunately, Oregon City did not cast a vote, and I'm just sorry to report that. But, the county's representative to the IMPACT meeting was required by her commission to cast the vote. She indicated personally she did not want to do so, but she was instructed to do so by her, her commission. I mean, there are, there are climate issues that do really exist, and I think many of our elected representatives choose just to ignore that in our county. And I think it's very unfortunate, and I hope that in the future, there will be more concern about what we need to do to reduce the effect of greenhouse gases. And I'm, I'm sorry I wasn't there to vote, I couldn't be there, and Kathy Roth was ill and wasn't, you know, I was going to speak to you at the study session, and I should have spoke to you earlier, but you might have got ill anyway, so that might not have made any difference. So, it's apology on my part in this last day, that we didn't, I didn't cast a vote for Oregon City on that. Anybody else have anything for the...
I give you a certificate anyway.
Thank you. I get a certificate. Well, thank you very much.
Yeah. Nice.
Oh, it's signed by Tom Hughes. PS, why didn't you vote for the climate smart? No, it wasn't written on.
Those were such good presentations, too.
Yeah. So, thank you very much. And, I'll start at my right this time for reports from the commissioners, since Commissioner Smith just raised his hand.
Two meetings. Clackamas Heritage Partners meeting the other night. Most of the report, we heard from Gail at our last meeting. When we were there the other night, there was workers redoing the lighting systems, the, some of the lighting systems in the theater have not been working in the, in the way that they were meant to work from the, the opening originally. So a lot of those have been re-restored, fixed up, cleaned, replaced. So they're doing a lot of work, not only outside of the buildings that we talked about in terms of the siding, but a lot of work on the inside of the building, revamping the partnership with the Confederate Tribes of the Grand Ron, redoing new exhibits. I've talked about some of this before. And the big news that we've all kind of talked about, which is that last year they had about 14, they made about $14,000 last year on school groups alone, and they've already penciled $15,000 so far for this upcoming year, so. And that will be a lot bigger as the year goes through. So I think things are going really well there. I attended the Oregon City Tourism Meeting. Our assistant economic development, our assistant in the economic development department, Caitlin Essig, I hope I said that right, attended that meeting. The Oregon City Tourism Council dispenses $20,000 from the county in terms of tourism every year to address issues on the tourism action plan that the city creates through the Tourism Council. And out of that $20,000, we've set $9,500 aside to look into hiring a consultant, this is in partnership with the city, we're going to have a meeting in January, to start looking at tourism as a whole in the city and start that discussion. I think that's a huge, you know, tie-in to what we're doing downtown and what we're doing at Willamette Falls. And so I think this is kind of the start of that discussion as we move forward in the next few years. So that was, that's going to be, I think, an exciting partnership, too. So, that's it.
Commissioner Roth?
Nothing.
Commissioner Roth?
I thought something, now I forgot it.
Commissioner Polly?
Oh, I just want to say again, I really enjoyed serving with all of you, and I'm definitely going to miss you, and know that you're all going to go on to do great things, and we'll still be seeing you all.
Absolutely.
And on, you know, Main Street did the Snowflake Raffle, and that was a great success for, I think, the whole city.
Think about it.
It was very good.
Who was the winner?
Um, there, there's, I don't remember the specific names, because there weren't, there, they weren't anybody's I know, but it is listed on the website. So you can go on Downtown Oregon City's website, and it's all listed there. It's on their Facebook page as well. And, you know, Downtown does have a lot of support, and it will continue to move forward. I'm very confident about that. So, it, it will continue on, the momentum will keep up. We've got to make sure that what happens at Willamette Falls doesn't outshine it. I'm sure it will shine, but we need to make sure that we keep the momentum moving forward. So it's good for the city when you keep the core solid, so, very important.
One other thing. Oh, go ahead. You go first.
What I remembered, I was approached by the Catholic Church over here about, in talking about the homeless people, opening up a portion of a place for people to stay overnight in the cold weather and serve meals and have a... So I guess some of the churches are coming together to open that kind of a service here in Oregon City. That's good.
One thing I wanted to mention, Mrs. Smith, Mrs. Smith, what was her first name? Zina? Zona. Zona Smith. Gave me that tremendous gift, and I've accepted that gift. It's mine.
It's yours.
But I think, I can't visualize a good place in my house to hang it. If I were to do that, I'd take off some of my wife's wonderful paintings in order to find a wall space for it.
I think I'd have a wall space in my home.
I would like, I would like if you, David, if you could have your staff figure out a nice place, it belongs to me, but if you have a nice place to hang it here in the city, one of the city facilities, where it'll be seen. I mean, that's a, that's a great, nitty...
It is.
...representation of our logo.
Yeah, I think that's almost identical, it is identical to the flag weave that you dispatched me with to Tatchean.
Right. And so if you could identify a place in the city to hang my present, I'd appreciate it.
We'll do our best, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Nice.
And I've been receiving several text messages here momentarily from staff. They would request the honor of your company and the other commissioners who are departing at one of our establishments for a adult beverage after...
And be prepared for hugs.
Yes, hugs.
We, we, we expect Wyatt to supply each of us.
Just go up to the trunk of his car.
And, and I think you should all wear those shirts from now on. No more tights.
Oh, I'm leaving.
Why am I getting interviewed?
Are you during the meeting with the gavel?
Oh. Another gavel.
Nice.